Good evening, everyone. We're going to Douglas Planning Board meeting for February 25th, 2020. Meeting is being recorded and available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the Douglas website. Welcome to Art at 7:02. First item on the agenda is public hearing. BWC Whitein Reservoir LLC, CEO of Blue Wave Solar. Application for site plan review permit, application for scenic road permit, and also application for shade tree permit. I'll read the public hearing. In accordance with the Town of Douglas, bylaws, section 9.4, the site plan review, Mass. General Laws, chapter 46, and 15(c), in the Town of Douglas General Laws, article 5, section 6, for scenic roads, and in accordance to MGL, chapter 87, for shade trees, the Douglas Planning Board and the tree warden are jointly holding a public hearing on the application of BWC Whitein Reservoir LLC, Blue Wave Solar, applicant and Susan Wazinski owner, for a permit that consists of constructing a plus or minus 3.9 megawatt DC ground-mounted photovoltaic energy system within a plus or minus 40.96 acre property zone as rural agricultural. Also, the applicant is seeking a scenic road permit to expand an existing opening within the stone wall and for the removal of approximately five trees with a scenic road right-of-way. The site is located at 45 Oak Street, assesses map, 132 parcel 5, as shown on a plan prepared for BWC Whitein Reservoir LLC and Blue Wave Solar entitled Oak Street Solar, 45 Oak Street, Douglas, Mass. By Beagles &amp; Thomas, Inc., civil engineer and landscape apothecary, 144 Turnpike Road, South Borough, Mass. Dated January 31st, 2020, and by surveyor, uh, patrol, data and design, 90 Main Street, Milbury, Mass. Public hearing is being held on Tuesday, February 25th, at 7:00 p.m. in the community meeting room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. A copy of the application may be viewed in the community development department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. That is my question to Douglas Planning Board. Public hearing is now open.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself. I don't want to bother.
All right. Let the record show that Mike Z is recusing himself. Do we have some need to present?
Sure. Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tom Reedy. I'm an attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst here on behalf of BWC Whitein Reservoir and its application for site plan approval and then the scenic road and public shade tree permits. I think tonight, we're going to focus mainly on that site plan approval. And with me this evening, we have our civil engineer from Beagles &amp; Thomas, Jeff Murphy, then from BWC, Matt Parlon, Patrick Kay, and Jackie Thurste. Throughout the presentation, feel free to stop, ask some questions. We just got some review comments today. We don't see any issue in addressing them. They're obviously not going to be addressed this evening, so we all anticipate that this is going to get continued to another public hearing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
All right. Thank you very much. So I'm going to start here with just a general overview of the property and the, you know, general site that we have here. So as noted, it's a 41-acre plus or minus parcel. 45 Oak, the house residence is located here along Oak Street, which is on the western side of the parcel, north of being up on this particular plan. The site is predominantly wooded. However, there's approximately 10 acres of hayfields in the eastern side of the parcel, as well as a small field here along the northwest portion along Oak Street. So as you can see, the topography of the site is generally a hill with a north-south running ridge line. So in general, stormwater from the property flows primarily to the east as well as to the west. The proposed array is going to be situated primarily on the eastern slope. This is rotated 90 degrees from the plan you just saw, north being this direction. Access into the site here from Oak Street. So our access is going to be from Oak Street here, following an existing cart path, which starts at this point here along Oak Street, just before the curve, follows this edge of this field here, and then winds its way up to the ridge line or summit of the hill in this area. So we're planning to utilize that portion as our primary access. We're going to have an 18-foot-wide gravel road. So we're going to be improving and widening the path that's currently there to accommodate for tractor-trailer truck turning. So we've got that widened out in several of these turns to accommodate that. And then we've got a larger turnaround area up here. And then we've got a 12-foot-wide gravel ring road that will encircle the entire solar array. The array area itself is going to be fenced in by a seven-foot-high chain-link fence that will go around the entire array here for security purposes. The area inside that fence is approximately 26 acres. The array itself inside the ring road is approximately 18 acres. And we have done two days of soil testing on the site for the stormwater management, design for the stormwater basins. Generally, the site is comprised of glacial till soils. So the groundwater table is fairly shallow from existing grades and generally follows and mimics the topography. So we've situated our basins such that it works in harmony with the existing topography out there. So this is just our site preparation plan. So we plan to have our primary access be here off of Oak Street. We've got a crushed stone tracking pad apron to prevent sedimentation into the roadway. And we'll be going up through this existing field here, hugging this side, and then making our way in. This is the first of our five stormwater basins, which is located here, and planning to take runoff from this portion of the access driveway. We have swales here on both sides that will capture that. And we have a culvert pipe that will direct stormwater into this area. And this is going to provide significant attenuation of stormwater from the access road. And making our way further into the site here, we've got a larger turnaround up here, which we're planning to only have as being temporary for when they need the larger trucks to come in and deliver the materials to build the solar panels. So this area here is planned to be only temporarily gravelled and it will be loaned and ceded after completion of the array installation. And we have a few areas called out here with these hatching. This is that existing field. We're going to have erosion control barriers along all the limits of work. This area here is going to be a contractor staging and parking area. So this is a nice, flat, open field, so it's a good spot for that. And also, we're going to have another kind of upper staging area located around here for when deliveries occur. Working our way further into the site here, you'll see that we have this ring road designed. Again, it's basically following the topography here. We've designed cutoff swale here to direct stormwater from that access road down into this basin and this northeasterly corner here. And then similarly, we've designed two other basins here, which will intercept water that's flowing down this eastern slope. And we've proposed temporary stump grinding wood chip berms during construction. These work really well, just to kind of break up the sheet flow that will be coming off of the construction area while the site is being built. So they'll be able to use those from the stump grindings that they'll be having in here.
So those going to stay permanently? Jeff?
These, we anticipate, will be temporary. So this particular solar project is unique in that it's designed to be a dual-use solar project. So the intent is to have the area underneath the panels be mowed and as a hayfield. So the idea would be to allow that to occur and not have any permanent, I guess, impediments to the agricultural.
Tell us about how you're getting equipment under the panels. How tall are the racking systems?
So these particular solar panels are going to be about, I think, what, seven to 10 feet off the ground, Matt?
Yep, so they're 10 feet at minimum when they're horizontal.
And what about the elevation additional to the pitch? What's the top of the panels?
So these will be single-axis trackers, so we'll focus on east-west.
They're going to change at times, obviously.
So each panel being about six feet long and be rotating at the center. So it'll be probably about 12 and a half feet when it's fully tilted.
That's it, not more?
Because so you have the three feet on one side.
So double the height of the fencing, roughly, as such?
12 and a half feet at the top.
83% additional to the fencing. So people could see it, more so than a conventional if you weren't hanging it underneath. Right, because it'd be taller, just asking.
The panels would be higher than a typical static ground mount.
Yeah, probably above that.
And again, they'll, you know, the rows are oriented to run north-south. And then the panels will face to the east in the morning, and then they'll rotate and then be facing to the west in the afternoon.
You use them as static, which I understand is not what these are because they track. It's supposed to be static.
Well, they're static, the posts, the support posts are static.
Right, they're static, but the panels aren't.
But the panels themselves will move like this, but all the support posts.
I'm just trying to get a sense for everybody, 13 feet high or so.
And we have some graphics if we can show you a little bit more.
What's the point of the hay fielding?
So...
I mean...
Yeah, yeah, I think Matt can...
Other than it's a romantic thing.
Are we there yet to discuss the hanging?
Okay, let's just keep going. Why don't you keep presenting?
Can I ask you a question?
No, not yet, no.
Um, yeah. So we've got the typical kind of components. You know, we do have that seven-foot chain-link perimeter fence. We're going to have some equipment pads here consisting of transformer, inverter, and then we're going to have some battery storage pads. So these are kind of going to be located centrally here, right at the top for easy access for maintenance, right where our access road comes in. I'm going to skip ahead here. Again, I will say that we'll, in terms of the visual aspect of it, so we do have, the nearest residences are here, which is 41 Oak Street and 61 Oak Street. And so the distance there to the fence line from 41 Oak Street, which is the house directly here, to the southeast, is approximately 228 feet from the house to the fence. And 122 feet of wooded buffer here. So we've provided some additional screening trees in this portion of the site here. This stormwater basin berm is also going to act as a visual screen. It's going to be about 10 to 12 feet higher than the existing grades in this area. So it is going to be providing a visual screening of this kind of lower section of the array as well. And again, we've designed these stormwater basins to basically, you know, capture runoff from this array area here. And we've designed energy dissipators here and level spreaders, which are basically riprap kind of plunge pools that'll have a curb set on it, set level, to basically take the flow and spread it out horizontally so that it's not creating what's called a point source discharge or just a typical pipe outlet. So we're trying to spread out those flows as much as possible. We do have a pretty significant reduction in runoff rates as part of the design. So when we look at the project, we determine where the water's flowing under existing conditions, and we run an analysis of that. And then we do our design, and we design our basins to make sure that the runoff rates are less than the existing conditions rate. So we have pretty significant reductions at all of our design points.
Question reading? Is it a 50-year, 100-year storm?
Pretty much, yes. So we look at the two, 10, 25, and 100-year storm events. And we have, you know, we have significant reductions at all of them. And I did put together a little summary, if you'd like to see.
Do you have a question, Jeff?
Sure.
The trees that you're proposing in the lower right, what's the difference inside the fence line versus outside the fence line? Typically, they're put on the outside of fence lines?
Well, yeah, yes. So this is, the fence line actually goes right here, the chain-link fence. This is, this is the limit of clearing an erosion control barrier here at the perimeter. So it is in that kind of buffer space between the limit of work and the perimeter fence.
Are you proposing any type of plants or bushes on top of the, your erosion control areas? On the tops of them?
Um...
Or in front of them?
No, so yes, no. So these, these are just traditional silt fences and straw bales.
Yeah, the ones in the lower area.
These ones here?
The ones that you had on the previous page. Previous page, that would be in...
You talk about the berm?
Creating, yeah, on the bays.
Oh, you're talking about this?
Yep.
This area here?
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, this is just basically an offgrading slope for the stormwater basin. So traditionally, you want to kind of avoid putting trees or plants on there because what can happen is the roots can actually migrate through the berm and provide conduits where water could potentially seep through, which we don't want. We basically want this thing to be kind of an earthen dam, if you will. You know, it's going to be holding back the water, so...
You're not proposing anything on top of it?
No, nothing on top of it. We want to try to keep that intact from a geotechnics.
Is there a maintenance plant on it?
Yes. So we have submitted with our stormwater report a site owner's manual, which outlines the typical operation and maintenance for the stormwater BMPs.
So, Mr. Chairman? I was going to suggest that we deal with the shade tree issue since the tree warden is here also.
Okay.
So we focus on that first. And then, I think we have some issues that we can touch on briefly. If there are for that, I'll let Jeff speak to it. And then I think, just as a courtesy to John.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Want to do that now?
Yeah, talk about the shade tree.
Okay, and we'll go back to...
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So again, the original intent of our access and for our design was to work as much as possible with the existing cart path that goes through this area, just in terms of minimizing overall disturbance to this area of the site up by Oak Street. The existing cart path comes out here, which is right in the middle of this curve, which is not an ideal location for us in terms of being able to turn into the site. So we tried to push it further past the curve, provide more site distance between the curve and where the access drive is. And we were envisioning a construction traffic plan where we'd have traffic approaching from the south and turning into the site to the right, and then conversely, leaving the site. We'd have vehicles making right turns only to avoid having to make this turn here. We added construction signage as well to here and, you know, certainly expect that there would need to be additional safety measures, such as a flag person as well for safety during the delivery time. So the impacts to the scenic right-of-way as proposed currently are right in this portion here. So there's a stone wall here, maybe 10 feet behind the edge of pavement. The majority of the trees are behind the stone wall, but there are a few in front of the stone wall. And those is, those would be where the impacts to those shade trees would be, as well as the wall itself. You'd have to cut a section of the wall out and basically regrade this area or just basically ramp up into that field. So there's a couple feet of grade change there, so...
Are there any field markers there in that wall pinned or anything? Do you know they do for surveying in the corner? Where you're opening the wall. Because I think there's a wall that appears.
Monuments.
Monument, thank you for it. Yeah, monuments that should be preserved or at least offset?
I can flip back to the survey plan. That particular, this is a bigger scale. I don't have the zoom-in version of that.
Well, it's just something to have in your mind and relax again.
Right, right.
Just to make sure that it isn't...
Yeah, I think I'd have to check that to see if there's any piece of monumentation at this angle point here.
Right, that's a question.
Yep.
John, do you have any questions or comments to make?
No, other than, none of the trees are marked at this time with notice. So we're not sure which trees may come down. So I really can't weigh in until we know. You know, we did meet a few weeks ago with these folks, and they gave a couple of, we gave suggestions on the driveway entrance. So it's up to you guys. But, you know, we had different considerations on the entrance and exit. So until the trees are marked, I really can't weigh in on what's going on.
They need to be marked, for sure.
Yeah, so again...
Billy? Yes, Bill?
So we did meet with the safety committee at the applicant's request to discuss the location of this access point. And the outcome of the meeting was that the committee, the safety committee recommended that we get full ASHTO site distance so that be demonstrated through this submittal process. It's a safety issue, so the committee felt that that took priority. Maybe, you know, maybe a few trees might need to come down if they relocate the access. Or if they plan on keeping it at that location, they have to demonstrate that not only they achieve site distance today, but they also maintain that site distance over the duration of the project. Now, that may be at odds with some of the regulatory requirements for site plan review where it talks about the scenic vista of the road, basically. So, you know, we'll see where the board would like, you know, what input the board has regarding the ASHTO site distance. And if they do relocate this, clearly, they'd have to mark the specific trees in the field. They'd have to call those trees out in an advertisement. And the last thing I asked for, a more detailed and descriptive plan, a separate plan from the plan set for site plan review that's specific to the scenic road and/or shade tree. That might be a little more detailed for those features. And, you know, basically satisfies our law and the state law.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah. Well, with that, I just want to kind of circle back to that. So we prepared several exhibits showing site distance as well as potential impacts to existing trees as well as the scenic road, stone wall. So this is an analysis at where we currently have the driveway coming in.
So this is a larger scale, right?
So this is just a blow-up. This is a, again, it's a blow-up of a 60-scale drawing, so it's not at 60-scale. But, so this is, this is our driveway here. So these ASHTO calculations are typically done for, you know, public roadway and intersections and, you know, intersections where we have a lot of traffic. And I just wanted to kind of put it into perspective that, yes, we will have a concentrated period of a few months where we're going to have trucks coming into the site. And then, once construction is done, there's going to be very, very little traffic. So probably, this is thing in the lifetime of the project is probably going to have less traffic than a residential driveway, which is being used like every single day. So in terms of that, you know, we discussed the measures that are available with the safety committee in terms of supplementing with flagman, police detail to make sure that there's safe access in and out of the site during construction. As part of the ASHTO requirements, we're going to see significant impacts to the scenic road right-of-way, and that's what we've tried to demonstrate here. So per ASHTO design, calculations for a design speed limit of 30 miles per hour. We have two categories that we're looking at here. The first is stopping site distance requirement, which is for a vehicle traveling on Oak Street. Have time to stop and see if there, you know, there's a vehicle here. So that requirement is 200 feet for 30 miles per hour. And then we have also the intersection site distance, which is for vehicles leaving the site. So that's where the site triangles come into play. So for the left turn movement, we have a requirement of 335 feet. And then for a right turn, we have a requirement of 290 feet. So these sight lines are shown on here. And these green lines represent the amount of tree clearing and impact that would need to occur to meet that requirement. So we're kind of up against a few things here. We're against the trees themselves and the walls being obstructions of view, as well as the topography. We have a high point on the curve here. There's a little bit of a knoll here. So even clearing vegetation alone would still be challenging to overcome in terms of site distance there and impacts. And again, this is, this is kind of how we have it designed right now. And then...
Have you looked at, well, of course you have. What's the reasoning for not going further down towards the corner of the property? Is there something I'm not seeing because of the, because of the cross?
There's a gravel path existing too, right?
Right, but maybe...
A little gravel path.
This direction, you mean?
Yeah, if you were to pull it down at the end, you'd be in the center of a straight run, which may increase some sight lines, at least make enough for that.
Yeah, so...
Talk to us, brother.
Yep, yep. So we did look at pretty much this whole, this whole array here. And we, at one point, I thought, okay, maybe this is going to be better here. But the issue is still because of the scenic road, all of the trees and the, and the stone wall. Everything is in a row here. So even if you put a break down in this area, you're still contending with looking basically at or through the row of trees that's lining the road here. So you're kind of fighting with that a little bit.
Is it lesser the evils or...
So did you look at relocating it closer to the dwelling?
We did. And that's the next option that I'll go through. We talked about with the safety committee, a potential of relocating from over here to over in this area. So there are some advantages that I, that we see to this option. In terms of impacts of the scenic road, I think this is certainly less impactful. The right-of-way line gets very close to the edge of pavement in this location. So I think the shade tree impact would be very minimal. This area in here, though, is currently wooded. So just in terms of an overall impact, would certainly be more impactful in that respect. But definitely, I think the site distance is better. Again, the ASHTO scenario where we're trying to clear this, again, it's a lot of impact for maybe a not-so-great gain in terms of having to deal with the grade issue here and the high point here. However, we definitely have more than the 200 feet of site distance here. And we have it 500-plus feet in this direction for stopping site distance. We have good site distance to the, this direction here to the south. And then again, it's just here that we have that challenging issue here. But we certainly think that with the help of a flag person and a police detail, this would potentially be a much safer option, if that's the right word, or potentially preferable.
Who's at 45? Is that the owner of the property?
Correct, yep. This is the, this is the house. So it is pushing it closer to the house.
So what are you saying about a flag person and a police detail?
So we're saying there's a person on this side of the curve, this side of the curve, and they will be stopping traffic.
During delivery?
During delivery time, during delivery time. So when there's trucks coming in and out of the site, typically, if you would have a work zone, there would be, you know, a flag person on either side stopping traffic from coming around this curve when they're getting, having the trucks.
So does that not affect the ASHTO requirement? If you have a flagger and a detail?
Well, the ASHTO, again, saying the, it's a, it's, the ASHTO in my mind is the gold standard here in terms of the overall practicality of implementing that on this scale. You know, it's something that the flagman and the police detail are meant to make safe access during the period where we're having actual traffic.
But this is temporary construction entrance. This isn't going to remain.
Oh, absolutely, it's going to remain. This is going to be the access to the site.
There will be service technicians going out there.
True.
How many times a year?
But very infrequently.
But there will be service technicians going out there.
Right, yep.
How long a period you're talking about, if you're going to have the flag, the flag units?
Just during construction.
Just during construction, yeah. So I'm guessing four to six months on a project of this size? Maybe three, four? Maybe three, four, three to four.
It's the next twenty years we're thinking about.
Would that mitigate?
True, but after that initial four to six month period, you're gonna have a couple pickup trucks.
But still, still this access in and out, it's gonna need to be addressed.
Typically about five, five.
Like with signage, is there available signage, like blind drive or something like that? Or slow around the curve or?
Yeah, so I think.
Something that could be an opportunity to use that instead of destroying the whole roadway of the scenicness of the road?
Correct, yes.
Well, I think that's an exaggeration, it was going the roadway. The, the, the goal, the goal and recommendation of the safety committee is to achieve ASHTO site distance.
Do we have something submitted by them?
No, but I can certainly get that from them for the next meeting. I think Jeff's looking for some direction tonight. The, Jeff, I'm sure can ratify what I'm saying as he was at the meeting. And John does too.
Didn't, didn't you just suggest that it's less impactful to the shade tree scenario here?
He did.
Versus there, plus we put, put that permanent road, no, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I do. This, this portion of it is definitely much less impactful. I'm not saying this is any less impactful.
Because there's trees in the way, still.
Are you mitigating the ASHTO with the police detail?
Whether it's there or.
The idea is to use those as a means to make it safe when we have these concentrated deliveries rather than kind of go overkill and completely like impact this area significantly from an aesthetic standpoint.
But isn't it the interior that's impacted? You're saying because there's no car path there, the trees would need to be removed within the interior of the site to create that path, the road?
Well, yeah, so that's, that's.
So, so nobody from a visual generally driving down a road on a scenic road is looking fifty to a hundred feet in the road, they're looking along the roadway.
Right, so this is the area we're talking about, the impact of the scenic road. This whole thing would have to be cleared and, 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 and the stone walls themselves would be.
But isn't it also the other side as well?
Yeah, the other side of the house.
Right, on the other side, I mean, where you had it planned, it would also have to be cleared in order to obtain ASHTO, right? Either way, right? I mean, I.
If, again, I'm not, if that is the intention, the impacts on the other side over here for ASHTO scenario would be more impactful than this scenario.
But if ASHTO didn't mean anything to, just say it wasn't a thing, then this is probably better without ASHTO because it's on a straightaway. Versus around the turn.
I think, I think it is ultimately, yes, better for site distance, this, this location here.
Regardless of ASHTO, and they're not having to take down trees and rock walls.
So, can I ask a question? If you, if you even moved it on the other side of the existing dwelling, you would even gain more site distance and not clip that corner the way this is shown.
Are you saying on the right side?
Yeah, because it's got five hundred something feet on the other, you know, looking to the left.
On the right side of the dwelling.
Yeah, going on the other side of the house.
We have wetlands in this area and this, that area is not going to be preferable. And this is just their yard, so we wouldn't want it like going through their yard.
If I could ask a question about ASHTO, before we get too hung up on this ASHTO, is it gonna be the same scenario as what was talked about at the last meeting where ASHTO really, according to the town manager, the town attorney, like gross negligence for emergency access?
Concerning a driver.
Is that the same standard, though?
Usually for business, ASHTO's more.
More, a little more strict?
Yeah.
Okay.
ASHTO, ASHTO is what you strive to achieve.
So when we're looking all the way to the right, on the right property line, bringing this driveway up next to the, this person's house?
Number forty-five.
No, number forty-one. So did you look at that option where you're hugging and you're missing the wetland? And you're hugging all the way to the right?
It's, we've looked at that.
There is a corner.
We've looked at that area and it's more, we don't think it's a good idea to put it over there. Not necessarily from a site distance perspective, but in terms of a constructibility and site work perspective, it's much more impact and the topography over there is much steeper. So we were trying to utilize the road that's already there as our means of access versus trying to go in through a more difficult area.
Well, you're, you're clearing how many acres? Or doing work on how many acres, I mean, this seems relatively minor.
Hundredth of one percent.
Right, so you, and you can skirt the one hundred on the opposite side and be away from forty-five. I just don't know down the street, what does that look like? Is it straight or is it curved?
It is, it is straight, there's another curve.
That's right, if this picture looks like there's, it's a little curve.
There's a reverse curve about five hundred feet down the road.
Five hundred feet?
Yeah, four to five hundred feet down the road.
We only need, how much do we need, two eighty and three thirty-five, right?
Well, that's the issue, is we have to run the same scenario down there. And again, we're dealing with another curve, so I don't necessarily know that that's the silver bullet fix here.
And, and I think once you enter the site, even if you start to turn, you drive onto the car path, you'll make your way up. Really just, the ASHTO needed to get out of the site.
Well, yeah, I guess, I don't know, I don't know.
But your, 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 your maintenance path or your construction road is gonna increase because you're gonna be on the far end of the property.
And then the other thing is, can you do one-way turning coming out of the site?
Coming out of, well, yeah, so for this scenario, I think this instance, we'd be looking at approaching from the south and leaving to the left and not going that way. And again, we have the, the stopping site distance, we have the stopping site distance working in our favor on that.
This is no right turn.
Yeah.
That would help a lot.
And it could be in the maintenance agreement too, that all the service people just take whatever turn, left or right only.
This feels a little better here. So I've been, not going around the house, but here.
Right turn.
Yeah.
And then you eliminate the, the arch.
Right, so essentially you don't need to address the three thirty-six, is what you're saying, by doing that, limiting the turn out? That part of it would go away.
So you're saying that you don't need to clear that whole entire side if they're saying left, left turn only?
I'm asking, I'm not.
I don't know.
He'd, he'd have to look at both scenarios. I mean, the one number, the, the tree cutting, I'm sure is the corner in site distance, the sightline triangles. Whereas the stopping site distance measurement is, is.
Yeah, it's a long.
Is not as impactful, is, is that right?
Coming that way.
Yeah.
That black dot?
Yeah, so this, this marks two hundred feet up from this point here, which is where the vehicles would be leaving the site. So we've got, from about, we've got over two hundred feet, I'd say about two hundred and thirty feet or so we've got viewed this direction.
So are you suggesting then that we would not have to be cutting those trees down in that triangle? In this case, if we were to take the right, left turn only out of there, and then that three thirty-six would go away?
For stopping site distance, yes, correct.
Well, that would be beneficial.
So it'd be right turn only?
Right, uh, left turn out.
Left turn out, out, leaving the site.
It's going that way.
Well, the limitation, though, is, is on the north, right? So, so that's really not helping. If you wanted to help, there would, it would be a right turn only coming out, because you have plenty of site distance to the left.
As you're pulling out.
But in order to make the turn.
So somebody's whipping around the corner, coming towards you, and you pull out in front of them, that's where the conflict exists.
But he's saying on that side where that dot is, that's where you're approaching.
Right. So in my mind, it's less dangerous to make a turn going left out of this site versus going to the right. Because you have to go a lot slower to swing out wide, and then you've got a vehicle coming.
You're talking about tractor trailer.
That's what I'm talking about.
See, that's one thing that I asked for is the turning radiuses, which, you know, by the way, Jeff, I, I need copies of these submitted tonight because we, this is the first I'm seeing this.
That's fine. Yep, so we did, we did design this apron for the tractor trailer, so I think it would be safer to have them leaving this, this direction for this scenario.
So the apron, I looked at the graphics and I thought you said the tumors would be paved, that apron ten feet in or something. Can we get, we, we did on another couple of them, right? We've had them pave it, ten feet in of pavement, so you don't get all the rocks coming out of the street.
Ten feet, if you're gonna pave it, I'd say go a bit more than ten feet.
Yeah, okay.
He has a fifty-foot riprap apron.
Well, yeah, we got, yeah, we, you had a tracking pad, yeah.
Pave it, because then you're not gonna wreck the road, all the rocks get pulled out of the road and, and then who's there to sweep it? It's not that, it's not that guy from the cartoon with the mustache.
No, they're responsible for that.
Yeah, but fifteen years in the road or ten years down the road, what I'm saying.
Well, there won't be, there won't, the road will be established at that point.
So what's the hardship to pave it in, ten, twenty feet?
I'm not saying we can't do that, I think it's reasonable to pave a little bit of an apron on there and then transition that to the tracking pad.
Well, that's fine, but I'm saying something should be paved so there, there's some platitude to catch the stones before they get out on the street. I mean, twenty feet in, what are you saying, Ernie? This wall? You're the, you're the street guy, you know about this.
It's a scrubbing pad, so I, I.
Something, right?
I can see maybe if you want to pave it after, after all the construction stuff.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, if you're talking then, yeah, but during construction, you just.
No, 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 but there's people around, sweep up. Trace it.
No, I agree.
Okay.
I thought you were talking about during construction.
No, 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 I'm saying when you guys are done with the project and you're.
We couldn't, we couldn't request that.
It should be paved, so it's, for eternity, for twenty years, it takes care of itself.
So editorial note, and just to get it on the record for Mary and Jeff, all of these conversations we're having about tracking dirt onto the road, the riprap pad cleaning are gonna be on the drawings.
Yeah, there, there are tracking pads shown on there.
No, no, the maintenance as well, so that we can enforce it.
Could also be, can it be referenced under notes to?
Yeah, notes are fine.
Yeah, on the actual.
Notes to a.
For construction.
But, but I don't want a letter that the guy building it, because these guys are permitting it, these guys are not gonna be the guys outbuilding it.
Right.
So, so I wanna make sure what we're talking about shows up on these plans.
So there needs to be a follow-up narrative, but it needs to be on a plan and it could be a more detailed narrative.
I mean, West Street, we didn't have some of these things, okay, so I'm getting into.
Lesson learned.
Right.
We're evolving.
Do we get a hold of this driveway and entrance and exit? Boy, do you feel this option is better than previous ones?
Yes, yeah, I do.
I think it's the lower impact.
Especially on trees and such, if we can get.
I think it's the wall disturbance.
In the wall.
Disturbance of the wall.
Yeah.
Which is used for a landmark, for a lot of things, for surveying and stuff.
Bill, any further comments on this design?
I mean, again, I wanna reiterate, if you need something from the safety committee, they recommend meeting ASHTO requirements. That's all, that's my only comment.
I'm okay with it, as long as I know there's gonna be flag people out there or details while this is going on. As far as it just being a driveway for pickup trucks and stuff going in and out of, I don't have a problem with the site distance on that.
Right.
What about additional signage, like blind drive?
With additional signage.
Whatever they use or slow around the corner or, you know, like whatever, fifty miles an hour.
Thirty miles an hour, I can just speed them out there. But during construction is my most, is my, my concern, and after it's completed, it's just gonna be another driveway.
Flaggers there the whole time.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
That should be safe enough.
Yep.
I would think.
That's why I'm saying I'm satisfied with this design, as, as long as I know there's gonna be flaggers out there and people watching the traffic when deliveries are being made for the construction.
Right, it should.
It's less impact on the scenic environment and.
It becomes an enforcement issue is what happens. So if you're not meeting ASHTO, monitoring flaggers, it becomes an enforcement issue and, you know.
Are they not, they said they were getting a detail.
Or a detail, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, we have.
Put it in a condition, but it becomes an enforcement matter at that point.
Right.
Do we wanna look, have them look all the way to the right of the site as an option to see if you can actually meet it?
Keep that official.
So nowhere on the site, could you meet ASHTO? Is maybe.
I'm not saying that, I haven't looked at.
Would it be worthwhile to just go through that exercise before we land the plane on that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We should, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Dot your I, cross your T.
We can also take comments from the audience on relocating the entrance very close to a person's house. But I think that we have to do our due diligence because the safety committee said that they want us to meet ASHTO. So we have to balance all the interests of every person involved here.
I wonder if they did not entertain if it was a left turn only of that conversation.
I don't know that was.
Again, that becomes an enforcement issue, Erin.
Yeah.
It wasn't discussed, it wasn't offered, big touch on meeting ASHTO, that's all I can do.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, if there is gonna be.
We can have a follow-up meeting if you want.
I mean, there's not gonna be a police detail pull someone over, if they take a right, it says only take a left, then, correct, I mean, that's.
Ultimately, it's our decision. ASHTO in the safety committee is a recommendation for us, we make the decision.
Correct. And this house number forty-five may belong to the owner, but it might be sold in two years.
No, forty-one is.
No, forty-five is the owner.
Yeah, I know, forty-one I'm concerned about as we look down the property line.
Getting too close to the forty-one.
Yeah.
But also having a driveway in the back of forty-five. Someone they know they're gonna buy the house and they're gonna.
They'll know that it's called getting comfortable.
I'd, I'd like the idea, if it, if it's the homeowner, it's getting closer to, that's the way it should be, not.
Not to, not to the next one, but, but they should look at it, right, you asked them.
There isn't an existing roadway or entrance where we planned the opening right now, right?
Not where we have.
Like, I see a little gravel path.
So this, yeah, there is an existing opening right here, a little break in the stone wall, but it's not sufficiently wide for.
Okay, so this is brand new then?
It'd be right on.
And clearing and.
Right on the bend, right.
Right on the bend, so we wanted to try to shift it away from there.
Could the stone wall be, that's open now, where the car path currently is, that can be closed? So we could basically reconstruct that and close it up. What, what, what?
Don't have to.
There's no.
No reason for that, to continue a nice stone wall?
Just a, yeah, you can leave it open.
Just an open?
It is there.
Just in case somebody has a car and they wanna go down.
You flip back one time.
Is there a stone wall at the?
See how the difference in where the two roads are?
Yep.
Opposed driveways.
Alternate, this is current, yep. This is the current little car path here, this is where we had.
Does that have an existing stone wall?
Yeah.
Yep.
At your proposed entrance?
Mm-hmm.
Right there?
Yes, yeah, so it's.
Oh, so.
I can't see in the picture.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So there is a stone wall there.
Correct, yep.
And that would be left if we didn't use that place, right?
Correct.
And you have an existing stone wall to the right of the house?
On the other side, yes.
Which runs about two hundred feet to the right of the house?
Two oh two, yeah.
That'd be. To the left of the house of forty-five.
Yeah, it's about right about here.
Yeah, which goes all the way down to.
Nope, it's all the way here.
No, two oh two, two hundred and two feet.
Yeah, there is another one. So you're gonna impact a stone wall on that one.
Mm-hmm.
No matter what, but less so at this, at this location.
So which one is less impactful?
That location, I guess.
The one, yeah, the one that's closer to the residence.
That one. This one, the stone wall and the straight out here, so it's just that little piece right there.
In your previous plan where you're showing the cart path, then I think it's a non-ASHTO, you're showing, you're showing a wetland in the middle behind the house?
Yep, yep, there is, yeah.
So that would be impacting any, if you're facing the house, the right of the house, trying to access that point with the ASHTO, because you're gonna basically run into the wetland in the backyard.
Hmm?
The wetland. Where do you see that?
Yeah, he only needs this much, um, to go up here.
What if you're going up that way?
Yeah.
Then he's got.
Yeah, there are, there are other trees along that, that section.
But you also have a. So that's the one.
Yep.
So if, if you were just to go up on the right side, right where you are on the right of the property?
Right where you've kind of shown. Yeah, I know, I know, yeah.
On that side of the property?
Yep.
That's their yard.
So we still have, we still have that, that stone wall and some shade trees right here too.
Yep.
So it's.
And you've got a challenge, more of a challenging.
And we've got a steep, very steep grade up, up here as well as.
In yours. I'd rather, I'd like the one, the last scenario you had with.
Ernie? Ernie, the second one, the second scenario. I need the second scenario part.
I think you need to look at all options, every single option and exhaust those alternatives. It's like an alternatives analysis, just so that our goal is.
More better.
Our goal is to get as close as we can to the best safety without.
Well, that other curve, that other curve where you're talking about, we're talking about is right here, so that's probably not much different than over here, just because it's so close. But we have to look into that.
Okay.
So if you get a determination, Jeff, on which way you wanna pursue, we still have to advertise and notify for the shade tree stuff. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, if you're satisfied after you do your analysis, you wanna pursue a particular thing, we don't wanna delay you. We want you to proceed.
There's gonna be some true.
Yes.
Be more comfortable with the second thing?
I think we have to prove that we've tried all spots on the property. And I don't know what other measures, safety-wise, we could put in, whether it be signage or something. I don't know how close that would be, I don't know a lot about that, so I don't know how close that would get you to being safe. And if somebody does happen to take, if you do left turn only and somebody happens to take right, what would happen? What's the, you know, how much are they not meeting it by?
Yeah.
Versus taking down all the trees on that side, so we have to weigh those two things, I think, anyway.
I like, I like the second design better than.
Yeah, I don't think there's any loss to moving it. Seems like you're gaining.
Ernie, they can make the turn one way. And you'll have flagmen in the detail if you need it, Oteah. Ultimately, it's up to you, I mean, which design you wanna come in with, I think we're more favorable of the second design than the first one right now.
Yep, the one right here, I, I like that one, yep.
Going back closer to the resident. Here, here, leaster. You're not on the corner.
Audience, Phil?
Okay.
Audience?
Well, when, when, when he's done his presentation, we'll take a moment.
Where are you on that?
So where do you wanna go?
Aaron, do you wanna ask about the hang?
Oh, yeah, if we're.
Sorry, I cut you off.
Hey, I got a question, hey. So let's go back to the hang thing. I, I cannot even comprehend getting around with it, I'm not, I don't do this for, you know, whatever, I just. Hang under the thing just sounds crazy. But tell us why and how and the logistics of it and the turning radiuses of equipment that bales and everything else, what are we doing here?
Yep, so I'll turn it over to Matt, he can speak to the.
Please, Matt.
Dual use.
Hey, everyone, Matt Parlon of Blue Wave, thanks for having us tonight. Um, yeah, so as far as this being a dual-use array, when we have the, if you don't mind showing the single-axis trackers. So single-axis trackers are one panel wide and then they're spaced sixteen feet edge to edge. So that means the posts are about twenty-three feet apart. So you have these alleyways that people go down that, so this would be, it would be taller in this situation. But post to post, you have twenty-three feet and then if you have any equipment you need that's greater than the ten-foot height of the panel, then that just goes right down the middle. And you just have these long runs that you can continue your agricultural operation.
Right.
It's, it's to utilize agricultural use as well as solar use at the same time, right?
So Massachusetts, we have a, we have a portfolio in Grafton, working with a farmer out there who wanted to find a way to get greater value out of his land. And, you know, before dual use was a concept, we said, hey, we'll do a portion of solar and that'll help you keep this farm in operation. Through dual use, we're able to have that help without actually sacrificing the agricultural operation of the land. This was a study done at UMass School of Agriculture where they sort of did a bunch of different orientations and studied how the crops grew with different shading profiles. And we worked with the Department of Energy to develop the tool that's now used to analyze how different configurations have different crop impacts and different shade impacts. So now we're hoping to be able to provide that so that we can sort of tailor-make a, a design that's appropriate for each farming operation.
So, but, but it does increase the height by six or seven feet overall.
Correct, yeah, so I mean, in, in this case, however, I would say, given the vegetation around the site, I don't, I would say visibility would be of lesser concern, just where the array is.
But you're exacerbating the potential visual impact from the street, other people, somewhere, somebody with a, you know, look, I'm all for the hang, believe me, I, we use hay, so. But it just, that has to be measured, you know, and, and I'm sure when you raise something another six or seven feet up, it's, it takes some toll, so.
Maybe we could rotate it so that it's north south? Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, so in this design, we have the closest residence in here, I think the only, the concern with visibility would be if you were able to see it through the tree line. As far as being able to see above anything, there's, there's pretty significant vegetation between it that's, and those trees are exceeding forty feet in height.
Thank you. If you're doing any tree removal mainly on the south end of the property, so you can catch more of the sun?
Exactly, yeah, so you need a bit of an offset between the tree line there and where the panels are.
What's your offset?
Do you have the offset I found in this location? It varies depending on sort of the angle relative to the array, just the way the sun travels across. But I would say that's probably a hundred fifty feet.
So along Oak Street, what's your elevation, preference of somewhere along the middle of Oak Street?
Maybe we could pull up the topo. We're pulling up the topo.
Take it up to topo.
One thing we look at when we're doing that is that you have that hundred fifty feet you need to clear?
Yep.
But you don't need to clear it all the way, you can clear it just so much that it doesn't block the sun. So we have a lot of, sort of more, we bring in habitat specialists that have shown more of like a gradient transform from forest to meta.
Six sixty, but yeah, seven, ten, twenty.
So, so tell me where the berm is that you're building up, what's the height of that berm?
The peak of the berm there.
And what is it at the street when someone's driving by?
So the toe of the berm is six eighty-five, top of berm is seven hundred, and the elevation of the street down here is about six sixty.
Yeah, so it's way up in the air. And then from the.
Yeah, but it continues up beyond there, too, so, you know, if these things are standing, how tall?
About thirteen feet if they're fully tilted.
Thirteen feet, so I mean, there's a chance you still could see them above the pond, so.
Oh, what about from the pond?
Well, from the road, I don't know. And, and so, you know, perhaps, Jeff, we could do a cross-section from the road so we can kinda get the line of sight.
Okay.
Yeah, we can pull that up, just, just saying, with the topo, show where your line of sight, if it hits, if you're coming down, if it hits the panel first or the berm first, essentially.
All right, let's move forward.
Now move on.
Your presentation, Owen, Jeff, what's next?
All right, so I think before we kind of went into the, the shade tree and scenic road realm, we were kind of left off at the stormwater aspect of things. So I think I had described, you know, we have this basin in this location, which is basically catching runoff from this portion of the access road. And then I had described these other basins, you've got three basins here along the eastern side, which are gonna take runoff from the array area as well as the access road. So we've got swales to basically direct everything into those basins here. Talked about the significant reductions in, in peak runoff rates that we're going to achieve with the basins. I think I was gonna just quickly show just our little stormwater summary here, just so you can see what we're talking about here. Bring this one down. Over here. So this is, again, this is just for your benefit, explanation of how we do the analysis of the stormwater. This is our post-development conditions hydrology map, which is where we break up the drainage areas or subcatchments of the site. So again, we've designed these basins to basically work with the existing topography, that ridge line runs through here. And we've got, you know, these basins situated in this location to basically mitigate flows in pretty much all directions from our site. So this is containing this piece of the development, this is catching this piece. And again, we've got these design analysis points labeled here. We've got an analysis point of one A, one B along Oak Street, these are both culverts that go underneath the, the street here. So we've chosen those as analysis points and we've got reductions of about sixty, fifty-five to sixty percent to one, one A, which is this upper culvert here. Since we're basically constructing a berm here and a swale to catch runoff and divert it this way, so we are reducing flows.
Which storm?
To the north. For, for all storms. So, yeah, this is for the two, ten, twenty-five and a hundred, we've got sixty-one, fifty-nine, fifty-eight, so about an average of maybe a fifty-eight percent reduction. So, uh, design point one B is this one over here, which is to this culvert here, there's a, uh, culvert underneath the street here. This one, we have about a five to nine percent reduction. And again, by virtue of just where our access road is here, but this basin is basically capturing this portion of, of that runoff. And we're talking for the two-year storm for all the basins, we're, we're letting out basically less than a CFS of flow, which is basically a very small trickle. So we're really trying to attenuate the flows from this site and not, and not really have much, so. Design point two, which is here on Oak Street, and again, this is, a lot of water does leave the site from this area under existing conditions. We have a twenty-one percent reduction across the boards from this large basin here. Design point three, which is to, in the direction of the, of butter here at forty-one Oak, we've got an eleven to twenty-one percent reduction also because we're taking this piece, which under existing conditions drains this way, and we're catching it with the swale and putting it into our basin. And similarly for, for design point four, which is in the direction to the easterly of butter, that's about a fifty-five to sixty percent reduction at this design point. And we've also got about a fifty-three to seventy-one percent reduction to this design point in this area. So we're basically taking the stormwater, attenuating it, releasing it in a slow, controlled manner through the use of our level spreaders to not have a point source discharge, so.
Phil, do you have to review the same needs yet?
No, you know, frankly, if the road changes, the location of the road changes, a lot of these numbers change, too, so.
Yeah, right. Sure, sure, but mostly, mostly in this area at these design points, and again.
I think the basins in the back would be making the same problem.
Yes, and I, I, I don't know if Jeff reviewed some of my comments, mine are more towards maintenance at this point. And gaining access to all the points in the pond that they have to get to to maintain the structure, so.
Yep, exactly, yeah, I mean, yeah, so we have the fence currently down here, but we do have it pretty tight to the limits of grading, so we can provide a little more access here to make sure there's a nice, you know, route to all of these areas. You know, the berm is certainly an option, but we may be able to just make a little bit more room where available to try to make it easier to get to those outlets for maintenance. But the berm itself should be, it should be, I think it's ten or twelve feet wide, so it should be drivable with a piece of equipment, so. We've got that access road basically following right along the edge of the, of the object.
Everybody good on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm right alone.
Okay. Let's see here, just wanna look through my notes, see if I have anything else to talk about. I think that's most of the things that I had wanted to talk about, the overall project, so if you have any questions?
I just got one more.
We're gonna ask them.
Ernie, I got one more, can you just bring in a number of your shading coefficients with, in regards to direct sunlight on the hay, hay field? With the panels are facing south and they're always tracking south, well, they're tracking the sun and always tracking south. But what the reduction is, you know, this is all great to grow hay, which needs full sun, but if you're only at fifty percent sunlight or forty percent effective sunlight, we're not just talking daylight, sunlight, what that is, that's all. I think you can do it.
Um, I think, Matt?
Yeah.
Can you do that, have you figured that in?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the hay grows.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, we'll bring down, we'll bring a breakdown.
Yeah, a percentage, because, you know, you're basically putting your hands up and you're shading your face and, you know, to, to the action around.
Phil?
Don't want it to fail, that's all.
Yeah, agreed. Is there gonna be any use of fertilizers or pesticides?
Yeah, so regarding the array, there's no chemical use of any kind, and then the current farming practice doesn't, to my knowledge, to use any pesticides, so then it's just.
If we put a condition in there that you're not allowed to, you okay with that?
Um, so for the array, we'd be more than happy for that, it's just for a farming practice in Massachusetts, the goal is to, here to, to have a, an asset that for the next twenty years, you're able to continue active agriculture. And, you know, when you're looking at someone farming there, if you're trying to find a farm, sometimes they might say, like, if I can use herbicides or pesticides anywhere else in the world, why would I come here where I can?
Yeah, but is this gonna be sold as feed, feed hay or construction hay, what's your consideration?
The crop might change, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so as it's currently, it's not an expectation of it, it's just as far as.
So you would object to a condition like that?
Yeah, this is a pilot.
Is that what you're saying?
Just, just.
I wanna be clear here.
I want it. Oh, my God. But the fence.
That would be difficult, I mean, for the, as, as Matt said, for the array itself and the equipment, there's no need for any chemicals whatsoever, but for continuing agricultural.
I just want yes or no. Are you going to, do you want, are you objecting to a condition of no use of herbicides or pesticides on the site?
Yes, if that is for the site, correct, yeah.
And you're still not objecting if we were to say that it's not favorable to do this hang or agriculture concept? You're okay putting these things back on the ground, right? I mean, you're still gonna be a project, but the agriculture's out, just say it was that, just asking.
Um, then we'd have to have a conversation with the state, because the state really doesn't like to.
What's the state got to do with this?
It's just if it's, if there's agriculture there currently.
But, but if it's still a solar array and you didn't do agriculture, they're not gonna not permit you, right, I mean, what am I missing here?
They're getting credits for it.
What kind of credits?
Yeah, well, there's. Agricultural use currently.
Yeah, and there's a disincentive if you're, if you're taking land out of.
So you're gonna put sixty-one A or something, is that what you're putting in?
No, no, the use of.
Yeah, so we'd actually be taking it out of sixty-one A.
In order to do this project, but I just don't know where the agricultural things are, but talk to me more about it later.
So there's a disincentive from the state if you take something that's in active agriculture out of active agriculture to make it just solar?
Yeah, but back taxes are paid sixty-one A when it's sold.
So sure, that's, and you get.
That's a separate thing, separate thing.
Totally separate than what we're talking about, yeah. So were you saying that for the SMART program, there is a disincentive by the department at the state to say you cannot take it out of, or, there's a disincentive to take it out of active agriculture? And so by maintaining agriculture, it is looked favorably by the state.
In what regards favorable to the developer? I'm just trying to figure out how this ties in, this is very unusual.
It's a tariff-based program, SMART, SMART program in Massachusetts, the tariff-based program. Your tariff is reduced by taking a project that has agricultural production and take it out to put a, just a low standard solar.
Single use.
Single use thing.
Yeah, you, you have dual use with the growing of.
All right.
Looking at cornfields or.
A.
Couple more, two, two more things.
So am I correct that you would like us to have a condition requiring you to enter into a pilot agreement with this alignment?
So I guess. It, it, it sounds like, yes, I mean, we'd like to take a look at some other.
Okay, next meeting you can confirm that.
We would love to do that next meeting, yes.
Thank you. And.
And generally on the.
One of the things I'm finding is that, you know, they show a limit of tree cutting on these plans, not necessarily your project, but that changes when they get out there and they start constructing and they see where the shade falls. And so I wanna be clear that the limit of tree cutting shown on this plan is what is being approved. And, and, you know, that, that should not be changing afterwards, because the part of what this board does is consider the butter's fuse and, and screening of the array. You know, so I, I, I want that reflected on the drawings, that no further tree cutting is permitted.
It's gonna always take less.
And I'm gonna have a condition, I'm envisioning, requiring that you go through the removal of chapter sixty-one process with the town. I know it's required, but sometimes it's gotta be.
And pilot programs.
And that's all, that's all. And that's all.
Before we vote, do you have any other presentations that you wanna make right now, or is this pretty much?
Thanks for, yeah, we're happy to listen.
Okay, all right. We'll take some questions from the audience, I know some people have some questions. We're running behind on our agenda, so this, this hearing will be continued, so you'll have ample opportunity in the next meeting to ask. Name an address when you give a question, direct it to the chairman and, and we'll get you an answer if we can.
Shirley Mizinski, sixty, Oak Street.
Thank you, Shirley.
I just would like to, first of all, um, stake my opposition to pesticides and herbicides because this is right about my field and I have paddles that are in there. Secondly, on your road, I've lived there for over sixty years. I walk that road every day. Believe me, the one that seems to be, the plan that seems to be more favorable at this point, I would say looks safer to me than what the other one, those curves are.
Yeah.
And believe me, you can put up all the signs you can think of, forget it. They do not pay attention.
No, they don't.
And one thing that people don't realize, that comes summer.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up.
And you're probably going to be doing this in the spring, summer, fall. The campground that you don't see has at least two hundred sites. People live there all summer, they travel back and forth to work, they leave in the morning, five o'clock or so, they're flying back home. And in the summer, it's even worse because they all have visitors and they're coming. And then there's another campground in the next town, Sutton, right down the hill, same thing. So there, you know, you look, it's a country road, right?
Yeah.
It's a country road. Forget it. You know, seriously, probably a thousand to two thousand people.
Yeah, it's, they're both big campgrounds, yeah.
Yeah. And the water slide and the lakes, people are going to their cottages. So, uh, it's a serious situation.
Yeah, that's why I'm, we're pretty much insisting on flag people in details when the construction's going on.
And, don't believe me, come take a look. Just, just even now, come up and just stand there for about ten minutes in my driveway and you'll see how fast they go.
Nobody does this speed.
Thirty miles an hour?
Yeah, no.
Oh, really? So, um.
Thank you, Shirley, anything else?
Not right now.
Okay, all right, so the public hearing will be continued, so.
There are other people.
Name an address, please.
Lori Howt, forty-one Oak Street. Um, I have a question about the height of the panels. I know, um, people have asked, you know, this ten-foot height, but very strictly, I keep hearing ten feet minimum. What is the maximum?
So I think, I'm happening to that, yeah, uh, we were trying to explain, we did try and do a good enough job, but.
I understand the angle, but I mean.
Yeah, so the ten feet would be the post.
Yeah.
Consider the post that, then, then you have the panel on it. And so if you have a panel on it and it's, let's call it midday, it's nice and flat, you're talking about ten. But if you're talking about, let's say, in the morning, when it's gonna be facing east, I'll just do that, you know, this part of it is down low and this part of it's up high. So this would be probably about twelve and a half feet. It doesn't go straight vertical. If it went straight vertical, that would be thirteen, but it never goes that far, so.
So the post would be definitely ten feet on these? Okay.
The fulcrum, if you will, would be like a ten, twelve.
Yeah, I understand. My other, my other question, thank you, is if the road moves, um, is this gonna have to go back to conservation commission?
But it impacts wetlands.
Yeah, the wetlands are right there, if you guys.
I assume the hearing.
That would be, that would be a conservation issue. If it has to, it will, but if it doesn't have to, it won't.
Next week, next Monday is the first hearing with the conservation commission.
So usually we keep those two hearing processes open jointly, so changes we make or changes they make are reflected for both of us.
Okay, I just, I, you know, heard someone mention putting it to the right of the property, which would mean if you put it on after the hundred-foot buffer, you're gonna be right on my property line, I have a real problem with that.
Yeah, we're not, no, we're, the second one.
We were looking at.
Go back to the other one. Yeah, there.
Okay, yes, sir, name an address.
Bill Rossi, forty-one Oak Street. So I have a, a question about the agricultural aspect of this. Now, I've only lived here for a few months, but I understand from my neighbors that this land is not really in active agriculture. I understand it hasn't really been harvested in several years. But if you go along with this plan, I understand by SMART program, you're going to have to do that, so that means there's gonna increase traffic from farmer, farmer's gonna have to get his equipment in there, he's gonna have to get the hay out. We didn't just, you didn't discuss anywhere in the traffic planning of this, what the impact of that's going to be, because you were just saying it's just gonna be some maintenance vehicles coming in and out. But if he's hayin' twenty-five acres, he's gonna have to get some big trucks in there to get that hay out of here. And you're not gonna have flag people there directing it.
It could be livestock, too.
It's rural agricultural, so.
Yeah, they can do that.
That's, it's, it's what they do. There's been hay, hay trucks and wagons and tractors going and out of there for the last hundred years, so, I mean, I don't see it.
It's the current uses of the property.
Yeah, it's the current, it's the current allowed use, so.
It's just not, it's not as much.
Not as much, right, yeah.
But there could be an independent farmer, they're saying they could lease it to, and all of a sudden now, you know, things open up, you know, he has chickens and pigs and he starts doing other things, you know, I mean, it could be, right?
It could be, it's just like, they don't know what property they're on.
What happened with any big farm.
They don't, but then it could increase activities and, I'm just saying, things happen.
We can't, we don't, we don't know that, so we don't.
Well, we don't know a lot, we don't know a lot of things in the future.
But you're building a road up there now that can accommodate large vehicles, whereas currently only cart paths. So you're, you're gonna encourage that kind of traffic.
Lot of land. As, as much as there's gonna be a solar farm that could come in with a hundred houses too, you know, it, but we, we study the traffic for the current situation that's being proposed to us. If it changes, we'll try to change with it, but, um, this is what's being proposed, so this is what we'll study as far as the traffic impact goes. Yes, sir, name an address.
Michael here, Torrey Road and Sutton. I'm one of the butters from the backside. And, um, you maybe spoke about this earlier, this is the first meeting I've come to, but I was just wondering what your solar company has as far as like a lifespan of these and also kind of a decommission plan? And do you have insurance bonds and what type of detail can we get on that? Cause, you know, maybe we already have all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they have, they have to have a decommissioning plan and, and, uh, the plan.
I mean, I assume there's something.
And the money is placed in a, in a bond.
Okay.
Standard practice.
Yes, sir, name an address.
Jay Duran.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Can you address that?
Yeah, happy to. Um, so, you know, these, these panels, people have been, they're warranted for twenty years, but people have been seeing them go, forty-year assets. And then as far as the decommissioning bond, that is correct, um, prior to a certificate of completion with the town or at a preferred time with the town, um, there'd be the posting of a decommissioning bond. And, um, we'll be getting that estimate over to you.
And the insurance question that we had?
Matt, do you wanna speak to the insurance question?
As far as particulars of, you know, on, on this project, we have done, that's usually down the road, but our projects would be fully insured, I mean, it would never get financed unless it was kind of a full insured.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, some of us that live in the area, we may outlive this system and, or certainly our children. And, yeah, it is, as Mrs. Mizinski pointed out, it's a very recreational area where a lot of people enjoy their summers and, so it's a, it's an area that we wanna make sure it just doesn't end up being a graveyard up there.
Oh, no, absolutely, I think the decommissioning bond is, so if we, you know, skip town and we just go away, the thing that sits there starts to rust, I mean, that is what, that is a tool that the, the town would have to, um, to pull upon, that, you know, it's not a, it doesn't become a, it's a tender state, it is there, it's written that if we, you know, if we leave town, it just sits in this repair, it triggers this bond, the town's obligated. And, and that is, that is kind of what that cost would, that posting would cover.
Okay. Yeah, good.
Jay Duran, sixty-one Oak Street.
Yep.
I am the side of butter on the left of this. And I don't have a question, I just want to get my opinion on record. I know we're still in the design process, but the alternate entrance, the, the second Plan B, we'll call it.
Yeah.
I think is the least impactful for all the residents.
Well, thank you. Really?
Shirley Mizinski, sixty, Oak Street. Uh, what you were saying about bond and so forth, just, I have one other question.
Yep.
The LLC, when does it get registered with the Secretary of State?
So, LLC, so this project has already been, has already been registered, it exists. So the project company, which is what this would be, not this, right, Blue Way, Blue Way's kind of parent, they set up an individual project company and that would be, the, that's the.
So the applicant is a legitimate organization, because that was in fact the case, that it was not when I checked.
It had not been registered as of.
When I checked about a week or two ago.
That would be interesting.
Massachusetts.
So you could provide something.
We, yeah. If there's a timing issue, then.
Understand, but.
We'll make sure, that won't be an issue at all.
No, is that Shirley?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, name an address, please.
I'm also down on Torrey Road, sixty-four Torrey Road. Can you speak to the water that's in these ponds, like this stormwater runoff ponds? Does it end up being sitting water? Like, there's a concern there with the whole triple E mosquito situation that happened this summer. Does that water flow through these ponds? What's the deal with those?
Yep, so, um, the way the basins are designed is, uh, they do, you know, they'll pond up during storm events, we have, uh, precast concrete, outlet control structures. We try to keep the elevations of that first opening as, as low as possible, um, but we kinda, you know, and, so, and again, these basins are, are designed also to de-water within seventy-two hours, um, under, you know, which is part of the Massey P. Stormwater standards. Um, so another measure we have here as well for maintenance purposes is we design these basins also with WIC drains, which are basically going to be, um, perforated pipes in crushed stone. Um, and we'll have a control over that with a valve, which under normal conditions will remain closed. But if there is a, a need for them to draw down the water in the basins for maintenance purposes, that is a mechanism that would allow us to do that, so we don't have standing water for long periods of time. It's only meant to really take what comes from a rainstorm and then draw down and go, go away, not meant to sit permanently.
And as people in the area, like, if we were to notice that that wasn't the case or that wasn't happening, do we have access to, where do we go with that complaint or that problem? I mean, does it have to go through the town or like, can we call your company and tell you to come drain the ponds, because we don't want tons of mosquitoes? I've got enough mosquitoes.
So there'll be contact information given to the town as well as signage at the entrance of the gate.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
On another project, we did, and I think that's when Jeff was involved, and we did get a surety that would allow the town to also maintain some of the storm, that we want to, some of the stormwater, if there were an issue with it. Is that something you'd want to do?
Yeah, to give you the right, you know, obviously, we wanna have.
Through a surety, so we pull a surety and then go out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Yep.
Jay Duran, sixty-one Oak Street. When you're talking about them self-draining in seventy-two hours, does that apply to the one near the road, the bend as well?
It does.
How would that one drain?
It does, it does apply to this one as well.
Right.
So, yeah, this one, again, this, this one, we basically have the basin designed.
Waterfront property, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, so everything is gonna be contained behind this berm here. So this, this area here is, is by design, is gonna be raised up to a berm. So this whole area out here is going to remain pretty much as is, you know, grass field. We've set the outlet, I think, fairly low on this one. I have to double-check the actual ponding on it.
So that will self-drain like the other ones over seventy-two hours?
That, that's.
That's what the design can do.
That's the intent, uh, but.
Ah, there we go, what the word.
No, it's, I'll, I'll defend you on that one.
Yeah, go ahead. We could add.
I did witness the soil testing.
We could add a WIC drain, yeah.
I did witness the soil testing and the design would be based on the soil testing that we observed.
Okay.
In compliance with state standards. So given that, that's all we can be held to.
Is that, you're gonna stay, I know you're gonna redesign the road, do you think that's staying there, even with the new road removal?
So if we move, if we move the driveway, I envision the basin staying to be a similar shape, except we'll basically kind of be taking and kind of ramping off the side of the berm and coming in through here. So the basin's shape, we wouldn't, uh, change if, unless there was.
Baseline outlet, Jeff, do you think that would change the, the direction?
The direction of it?
Yeah. Towards your proposal.
We like it going the way it's going.
I, I, I think it's best to keep it where it currently is. This is kind of following the natural path we, we try to just dissipate it into that field.
All right, we'll take one more question and we have to move on with our agenda. Uh, we'll take two more, yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Name an address, please.
Christina Wackel, fifty-four Oak Street.
Thank you.
So, I guess my main question has to do with the dual use of the field. I had heard in advance that the committee sort of said we're not going to allow the kind of herbicides and pesticides that can often accompany solar work, which I have kind of some serious concerns about. But I wonder about with the dual use, if a farmer does decide to also use the field agriculturally and is gonna use something like, for the purpose of farming, pesticide, herbicide, something like that, now that's not gonna just seep into the field the way it normally would and filter out, it's gonna like run. And do we, like, I know that we're not using herbicides to maintain the site, the way it sometimes happens with solar, but what about a farmer's use?
Well, we particularly don't use on our farm, any herbicides or any pesticides on any of our produce at all, except, um, organic, um, like an oil on our berries before pre-emergence or the apple trees only three times. It's not gonna be apple trees here.
Right, I'm saying, what about this farmer that's.
But on any produce we do, we use no herbicides and we use no pesticides, so it can be done and we do it, so.
I know, but who gets to, like, who is the farmer that's gonna do the paying and what if he decides something different?
It's the current, it's the current owner, leasor of, of losing the hanging right now.
But who's gonna regulate that?
She's gonna lease that to somebody else, she's not gonna do that. I don't know.
But mo, mo, most of them don't, I mean.
Hay's gonna be in the shade.
No, no, that's not. I just wonder like where it's gonna run.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, if there's any water runoff, that's why you have retention ponds right now, it's gonna reduce the runoff. So he's proposing five retention ponds on the site that are actually gonna reduce
So, he's proposing five retention ponds on the site that are actually going to reduce the water flow onto any of the abiding properties. So, it's improvement to what you have today. I mean, two of them are, or three of them are offsetting by fifteen percent runoff. And then Jeff, as what, thirty, thirty-five, forty?
Yeah, but the, the treatment from these ponds is, is not for herbicides and pesticides. It's for volume of water.
Yeah.
These panels are high enough that you wouldn't have to do a lot of vegetation management, I would assume. I mean, it'd take a long time for stuff to grow ten feet tall. Certainly, hey isn't going to do that.
Go ahead, Mike.
Mike's work up forty-six Oak Street. Alright.
What say you, Mike?
Here we go. The opening for the driveway on Oak Street, how wide is it going to be? How wide are you going to make it?
Up here?
No, either one, when you're on either side.
I want to say it's at least maybe eighty feet, eighty to ninety feet at the widest to accommodate the turning for the trucks.
Yeah, you're going to need it there, that's for sure.
Yeah.
The next thing, I know we're all talking about these trees, and Shirley, I think you can contest. Eighty percent of the trees and stuff in that corner, it's all dead vines, poison ivy. It's just all garbage, ninety percent of it. And I think if you get it all removed, get rid of it. Because the more you get rid of, the better line of sight you're going to have. The stone wall is a halfway stone wall in that area. The newer proposed opening, there is no wall there. It starts in that general area and then works down towards Jay's house.
Go back to the other one.
So, it is a good spot also where that opening is. You're not showing the new house that's built right across where that opening, right there. There's a new house right there. And you know, it's not there, you're not showing it.
So, can you add that to the plan, Jeff? The new house?
I don't believe it shows up on any of the aerials because it's so new, so.
Well, you'll have, might have to figure it out because you pull the building permit, so you've got the specs on setback and where it's at.
Yeah, they have a plan.
So, through the plan, that way there, so you know, I mean, that is the best opening, but they are going to be getting the headlights. So, you might want to think.
During construction.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
That's at night.
Yeah, at night, there won't be a whole lot, but during the day, they are going to get the brunt of it. So, just think of runoff coming out of that driveway and stuff like that and going right across the street. As you know, that's where the old bond was?
Yes.
And that's a drop.
That's a drop.
That guy just drops straight down.
Could you pull the other plan?
So.
So, we could see where this new house is.
You've got mine.
Yeah.
With the main thing that I want to get across is any improvement on that corner? I mean, the trees on the other side of the road can contest how many cars have kissed the trees. So, the more that you remove, the better off you're going to be.
I, I have no problem with removing.
Right, we're, we're all on the same page. So, I mean, as far as deals, we are.
There isn't much really that scenic on that corner.
No.
Wait a minute, we, we are having a conference soon about trees, the next, first of the month, I think it is.
Yeah, it's coming up.
But let's try to save the good ones and.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I agree, Shirley.
But I mean, I think a good video or whatever that area to show really how bad it really is will really enlighten everybody on what we deal with every day.
I thought of one more question.
Oh, you got one more question, Tracy, go ahead.
Do you have a proposed narrowing of that entrance when you're done? So, the permanent driveway, you have a plan of that that we didn't see yet? So, not, it's not going to be eighty feet, it's going to be like twenty feet with the pavement and the apron. Can you do that for us?
Showing the paved apron?
Yeah.
Yeah, dotted in.
How are you going to leave it?
We can prescribe that, I guess, inside of that and with it being narrower, I guess.
Post-construction.
One of the little flags.
Okay.
Tracy, what have we normally been, you said twenty feet or so?
Twenty. I don't know, twenty-nine.
That was going to be my comment. You want to make sure the turning radius accommodates, you know, either a fire truck or, because as I mentioned, sometimes these batteries, sometimes rarely have fire issues. Not that the apartment would get out there, but they may need to gain access.
But it will be just gravel, but the paved portion will be paved and then the rest could be gravel sides.
Transition.
Yeah.
Road transition.
Or they could leave that size in place.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Mike.
One quickie on that. I'm twenty-five feet, I'm lucky to get a ten-wheeler in. There's no way any kind of tractor's getting inside. The road's too narrow to turn.
Oh, yeah, you're going to have to have it.
So, the thing is, is I know what you're saying, Tracy, to narrow it down, but in the future, if anything ever has to get up there, they'll never be able to do it, especially if it has.
It has gravel sides.
Yeah.
They might, depending on how they lay it out.
The pavement.
I mean, it can widen.
He can show us, he can show us.
Yeah, he can show something, but just letting you know, Oak Street's real narrow. You cannot turn. I've tried to have landalls back in my yard.
Yeah.
They're at the stone wall across the street and they can't make it in.
They'll show us the truck.
So.
Yeah.
It's bad. With the fire trucks and stuff, think of that.
Okay, so, somebody want to make a motion? You all say guys, with any, any questions for us or, you know, what direction you're heading in?
I would only have one question. Would just be if by preference, you'd like to see any clearing in that corner, even regardless of the access roads. We'd be able to put some sort of O and M in there to help out visibility. Some sort of O and M inclusion to help out with the visibility on that corner. If there's anything like that, let us know. We'd be happy to work on it.
Okay, yeah.
Do you guys want to start?
No. Alright, someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to continue the, continue the public hearing for BWC Whiteham Reservoir LLC to March tenth at seven.
Okay, put it by you guys?
Yep. Much debate?
March tenth.
Okay, motions are made.
Second.
Seconded by Jake. All's in favor? I oppose.
So, just, just for the record, this is all three hearings. They may need to re-advertise some of it.
Shake.
Okay, so how long do you want for that?
We just use up an hour and a half.
It's not an hour.
An hour. An hour. So, everybody in the audience? Meeting continues.
A lot of hot air in here.
Sounds like a lot of.
Somebody feet under?
I can show it, Mike's back.
Jeff's that way. Oh, you want me to give you?
I can do that.
I can scan if you need them.
I got to get you to show that over there at seven four.
Let's record.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Let's record.
We got a guarantee. It's great. They're two hundred scale. They're probably record down. It's pretty, it's pretty big. I'd be all in sort of just in the next round. Probably one of the US hardens. So, we're talking. Thank you, everybody, thank you.
I'm waiting for all you people to get there.
There's no herbicide, it'll go with the neighbors. No waste of building, no herbicides. Why would they be using them anyway? I know, well, they want to leave their options. Whatever agriculture.
The solar people aren't going to be.
Well, they would normally if they're trying to plant their grass.
Oh, thank you.
But they want to use it for agriculture.
Get more, but yeah, I just might.
You're saying, you know, there's just natural pesticides are farming. Most of it goes into the ground, but there are elements for different storm events, so that's what he was talking about with the comparison, fifty percent reduction.
It's not, it's not easy.
So, the difference really is. Did you hear what he said about the tracking? It's always like blocking the sunlight around there. So, infiltration should increase as a result of the project.
So, whether pesticides.
That would help. That would help.
What I'm going to move is if they should use the agricultural, they're not doing agricultural on this one, right?
No.
Joe, turn the camera around.
The well water, right?
Good.
So, that's that.
And on the other projects, we have a condition.
Clear out?
I was hoping they'd do the same.
That's why.
Alright, yeah, let's get rolling. I didn't actually.
Okay, now we're ready.
See, now you know how it is.
I know, I was, yeah.
Alright, let's continue on. Seven thirty, which is way past, yeah? Public hearing continued. J E H Real Estate Investment Company LLC, application for same plan review Depot Street, forty-seven, uh, forty Depot.
Forty Depot.
I'll be very quick, I promise. For the record, my name's Mike Dryden, I'm a senior project manager with Allen Engineering. I'm here once again on behalf of the applicant, as you read into record.
With the five new condos.
Yes, yes.
But not net five. It's not net five.
It's a net eight. So, the last time we were here, two weeks ago, we hadn't yet received all the comments from Bill and I think a couple other officials. We didn't, we didn't, on the eleventh, we didn't have all the comments at that time. Shortly after that hearing, Bill did send his comments, so we had an opportunity, we had plenty of time to address the comments. We issued revised plans a week ago. We did just yesterday receive Bill's follow-up comments, which we have. I've already, I'm already almost a hundred percent done responding to those. Obviously, that doesn't put us in a position this evening to get this wrapped up as we had hoped. I'm optimistic we can address Bill's remaining comments and hopefully next time have a draft decision and get this wrapped up.
Bill, we make a conditional upon, you're feeling comfortable with this?
You know, I would advise that the board see the final plan before. They don't lose any time, Aaron.
Good.
You know, the time would not be lost and that would allow Mike and I an opportunity to go back and forth.
Sure, absolutely. It's a good project.
Yeah, I just, Bill just mentioned that he would like the board to see the final plans and that, we have two weeks, so, you know, I'll, as I did the first round, I'll certainly turn this around very quickly. If there are any remaining comments, I would, I would imagine they would be very, very minor in nature. We've already whittled this down from a hundred percent to, you know, fifteen percent, so.
Is there anything we want to talk about? Because I know there were a few things that you kind of pushed back a little on with regard to my, my comments. So, for example, I know the fire chief had suggested that he wanted some sort of access from the rig, from that side, and nothing was really provided, other than what's existing. The, the other thing is you added a transformer up near the.
Here, right behind the enclosure.
That's new and there's no screening that I saw associated with that or no detail associated with that.
So, in order, we did add a note to the plan to keep this open. And as we discussed at the last hearing, we, we were not proposing any gravel surface, we were going to keep that a lawn area. So, unless I missed something, that's, I think we got that. We did add a transformer, the MEP engineer, after we initially submitted, finally gave me some drawings. So, we do, we did add a transformer. We wanted to put it in the front yard of the building, which didn't make any sense to me. So, we tucked it in behind the enclosure. There are landscape screening plantings around it, but it's, it's, you know, you're all familiar with the green box. It's, it's nothing that's too obnoxious.
Is there a fence along there?
There is no, there is no fence.
Can there be some fencing that just goes back to, just at least to the point of the transformer from at least ten feet in front of the.
You have the dumpster enclosure, so just extend the fence straight out.
Exactly what I was just going to tell.
There you go.
I personally don't think we need to screen a little green box. I have plantings shown around it, but if that's the pleasure of the board, we can certainly do it.
Those are everywhere.
Well, well, it was undefined as to how big a thing or.
Yeah, extend the fence, that's fine.
As you know, Bill, that's all determined by the power company, so I didn't provide you a detail of the pad.
That's part of the concern is, you know, we don't know what they're.
Let's be realistic here, it's not going to be a twenty by twenty transformer, it's a small apartment complex. We're not going to blow you away with it.
What's the need for the transformer? The line voltage on the street?
I'm not an MEP engineer, that's what the MEP engineer is, is calling for.
Where's your hydrant? Just ask where the hydrants are on the street.
Yeah, why, why did they even need? I didn't think we needed one early in the project either, but it turns out we do. There was a question about hydrants, there's one there.
Perfect, yeah.
And there's another one right there.
Right, so, so that, in case there is snow loaded there, back to your other plan, where your snow storage is?
Push it to the back.
Right there?
Push it to the back.
They, they could park there, at least at the hydrant, they could run the hose down from that other hydrant if they have to run trucks on both sides. Yeah, like, say that's a whole pile of snow they can't get through and there's cars parked there.
They're going down the other end, yeah.
Well, they could, they could work from that area there, plus the other side, there's a hydrant on both sides. It's great, yeah.
Oh, yeah, just a little.
Two last things, can you just touch on site distance? I know I had a couple of questions on that.
So, Bill's question was, how did we measure site distance? Because one of the notes right here says that it was estimated with the removal of some vegetation, and I'll use this for an example, there's some evergreen plantings right on the property line that sort of lean over the street a bit into the right of way. Me and a colleague, I asked him to pull branches back, we worked together and it's an estimated site distance, I'm confident it's within five feet. Ultimately, you'll see clearly once some, we could do a little pruning here and remove the junipers in this island, but, and particularly in this direction, it was very simple, I just stood fourteen and a half feet back from the edge of pavement as ash tow requires, held my camera up over the junipers and you could see all the way down the street. So, I'm making those types of assumptions and I don't think.
And there was no conflict with mailboxes or the telephone pole?
The mailboxes are actually, so, as you know, Bill, the fourteen and a half feet is required for site distance from the edge of pavement to your vantage point. The mailboxes are in between that, so you're not, you're not looking at mailboxes, you're actually beyond them as we measure the site distance.
I just want to make certain because they weren't on the plan.
They, they are shown on the plan, actually.
No, they weren't shown on the site distance plan that you submitted.
They were, actually.
No, on the copy that I reviewed, they were not on it, that's why.
I don't want to argue with you, Bill, here's the plan, there they are.
That's maybe a new plan, I don't know.
What's the date for my schedule on that?
Two eighteen.
That's six days ago.
The one submitted with the most recent comments back from you. Okay. May not have been reviewed.
And then on the site prep plan, the site prep plan?
Yeah, it was after the last.
I've got a mess on my hands. They're showing the site prep plan as well to remain, I called them out specifically. Right here, mailboxes to remain.
So, I got a question.
Sure.
The site distance setback where you take your measurement, you're taking it at fourteen and a half feet versus ten and a half feet or twenty feet back?
Right, so what we do here is we project this curve line and we go back fourteen and a half feet and then we use a three and a half foot eye height as if you were sitting in a vehicle.
Correct. So, you did fourteen and a half feet?
Yes.
Okay. And yeah, it's supposed to be from the eye height of the vehicle and stuff like that, but you mentioned about going up here.
Right, if you, if you were to get three and a half feet.
Avoid the obstructions.
Yeah. If you were to sit here at three and a half feet, you wouldn't be able to see anything in this direction because you have junipers there. So, what I did was I got to that point and I held my camera up and you could clearly see.
Is it fourteen and a half feet, is, is that the requirement for driveway areas versus twenty feet for intersections or driveway streets?
Technically, ash tow allows you to measure it from the street edge for roadways that are narrower than twenty-four feet. We took a conservative approach. I think it makes more sense to set back where a driver would actually stop so they don't have to have the nose of their car into the street.
I just want clarification.
Yep.
What was that one more time? Is it the, the road is narrower than twenty-four feet, you are at edge of pavement?
Yes, that's the way the ash tow site distance regulations are written.
Really?
That's in accordance with our traffic engineer who helps us with these type of things.
Bill knew.
I can send you the excerpt, the traffic engineer site.
What was that one more time? Is it, the net, the road is narrower than twenty-four feet, you are at edge of pavement?
Yes, that's the way the ash tow site distance regulations are written. That's in accordance with our traffic engineer who helps us with these type of things.
Bill knew.
I can send you the excerpt, the traffic engineer site.
I mean, I'm curious, but you don't have to go out of your way, but.
No, not at all.
It's just educational for us to be aware, because we've seen it and the numbers are varied, that's why we want a clarification.
Years ago, it was assumed to be fifteen feet for every measurement from the edge of pavement, and now there are essentially three different tiers of site distance, you may know more than me, Bill.
I heard twenty, twenty feet, you know, last week, in all the forums, so.
Twenty feet, I've never heard twenty feet. Well, I mean, if you think about the logic of it, really, it's, you don't want your car to be in the traveled way, so even fourteen and a half seems a bit much to me, but that's, that's how it's measured, yeah.
Big car.
Because half of the cars have, or less.
Okay, Bill, anything else?
No, I think that's it.
So, as Bill said, we're, he and I will work back and forth and hopefully, uh, we'll have everything wrapped up two weeks from today. Yeah, I hope so, I hope, my client's very anxious.
Be with the timeline anyways.
Like I said, just something, like you said, just the line, but something just kind of shield that from the, from the bottom.
So, just to close the loop here, um, is, is a fence preferred or is it the landscape plantings that I'm showing?
Well, because right there, it doesn't show, where do you show the land?
They're on, they're on another plan. What I will do is I'll go back and I'll make sure that we have.
Do they have plantings?
I think I'd rather see a transformer or a plant than a fence.
Me too.
Oh, there you go.
But we'll wrap them around the backside.
Maybe just a little bit, yeah.
My focus is for this dwelling, but we'll, we'll wrap them around.
What are those trees? They look really close together.
You got some good details on there.
As long as they're.
Yeah, they, they look like very close.
They're Emerald Arbivites, so they're upright.
Oh, okay.
So, we brought them around the enclosure just so the neighbor didn't have to look at, you know, a trash enclosure?
Yeah.
And we'll wrap them around. Okay.
Three more, two more?
The only other thing I just remembered, Bill, is you had brought up, um, we talked about this last time, but screening along the entire edge, I mean, we just talked about this piece, but I think you had a comment.
I may have, I can't remember, um, but I did take some photos and I think I showed them to you. It, it is relatively sparse, even though on plan it shows a tree line and whatever, um, you know, it's relatively sparse and, you know, there is a, an amount of change that's occurring on the property, um, so I, I just want the board to be aware that screening is required. I don't think any new screening is proposed, so, um, I was deferring to the board, I think, for their opinion on it.
Between the neighbors and down in the, in the eye?
So, obviously, the homes are here and here, so there's, there's pretty significant vegetation here, we're screening this, there's an open lawn area through here, um, that, you know, we're relying on what's there to remain, we certainly don't want to take any vegetation out along the property line.
And there's a six-foot-high solid barrier fence?
There's a six-foot-high fence here already on the neighbor's property.
On the neighbor's property, and it only goes?
It's right there. So, it's basically intended to screen their backyard here.
Okay.
I know that the applicant has a really good rapport with these neighbors to the south.
That portion's covered, right? That portion of the screening, so your comment sheet, you refer back to the number twenty-one above. What is, is what is proposed adequate for screening? So, you believe that what's proposed, which is nothing additional along that, is adequate for screening? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, we're, we're just trying to rely on what's there today, exactly.
What's the black on the top?
Those are additional plantings, this, the, the butters driveway is right here, uh, there's sort of a hole in the existing vegetation right at the corner, so we wanted to infill that for that of butter as well.
Okay, so there's no other holes anywhere else, though, on the plan, right?
It's hard to, it's hard to describe without pictures, and, and I know, Bill, you did have a link for, with pictures, I have some on my phone.
Because you're removing that existing pavement, so you're disturbing, like, between the, the, um, transformer and the existing vegetation, you're disturbing, yeah, right there.
No, we're actually pulling, we're actually, we're not touching any existing vegetation, we're pulling the edge of pavement farther away from the property line.
But you, you did extend it, you did extend the pavement with no.
Yes, it extends to the east, correct.
Not towards this property line, yeah.
Same, just so we're confined inside of this.
So, you're proposing loam and seeding versus, uh, plantings or screening?
Leaving what's there there.
Well, yeah, right.
They're, they're proposing additional loam and seeding.
That's, yeah, where, where we're pulling up pavement, we want to stabilize it.
This is where it looks like right here. This guy's all set, because he's got a fence, he did his own fence, a little off from the property line, but.
That's what they wanted.
I guess we need to make a determination, is this adequate screening right here? Here, yeah, in the gap. We have the opportunity and do, do they meet, yep?
I have one photo, this is looking back out toward the street and you can see, that's sort of representative of the vegetation, and right now in the wintertime, the leaves down, it's sparse.
So, there's some tall shrubbery between, and that's, that's all we've got. And you're not going to be expanding?
Was it on number seven, right there?
You're not going to?
So, I think it's kind of sparse.
It is sparse.
And that was my take on it, too, even though they showed a tree.
We've got this picture, so I think when.
Right, but that's, that's looking right here, so we've, we've covered that.
You're putting the dumps to that.
You're looking right, I think you're looking right at that house.
Okay.
That area's all going to be shaded and covered up.
And where the neighbors haven't been in, planning about what you have going on?
No, no.
And when you give a couple little extra shrubs down there in the bottom, I think that'd be fine.
And, and the applicant did meet with the neighbors and they have a really good rapport, um, they were happy with things.
And you think you're going to be disturbing that whole area and have to re-loam and seed where you're pointing?
There's, there's quite a bit of grass there now, but I just want to make sure that it's stabilized, so it's not susceptible to erosion.
Okay.
So, wherever they pull the pavement back, certainly they're going to loam and seed.
Yeah.
And it may be just an overseed where there's already grass.
Are they, um, are they putting any, what's, I guess, what's the pitch of that pavement? Is, is there any firm going in, so it doesn't actually cause any water to flow?
It actually, it all flows into the site, there's a gutter down here and it's picked up in a catch basin here, so everything flows inward.
Okay, just want to ask that, because.
So, your proposed trees, you've got two different types at the front here, right?
Right, there's Arvivite at the front, there's, um, Mountain Laurel and Northern Bayberry we're using.
Okay, maybe when you're revising that, I don't know if we just straighten out the line, maybe? Because you, the transformer issue, you said you were going to wrap it around?
Right.
So, just, I mean.
That's fine, I just personally, I personally don't like straight lines and shrubs, I like to have it a little more natural looking, but whatever the pleasure of the board is, that's what we'll put on the plan.
I think you just have the transformer tracing, nobody said that, right?
So, you're going to wrap it around to the pavement?
Yeah, we'll add a few, we'll come right around the edge. I think that's certainly reasonable.
So, the only last comment I have, and, and I don't know that there's an easy answer to this, they have an underground infiltration chamber proposed to handle the stormwater. It does have an outlet, um, and that outlet is shown as discharging onto Martin Road, which doesn't have any underground drainage system. Now, for the design, they are indicating that they will be below for the design situation, below the current flows leaving the site. The concern I have is if that underground system fails or, you know, stuff goes into the catch basins and ends up going in there and boggling in the system, more and more water would make its way out onto Martin Road, so. The only, the only way that I think that could work from a low maintenance perspective is if it were a superficial pond. And I'm not suggesting you change the design, Mike, I'm letting the board know what my concern is about having an underground system.
And I certainly respect your concern, Bill, but that holds true to any design in any project, any drainage system, if it's not maintained, will fail and you'll have more water leave the site.
It's easier to maintain a superficial pond than, than an underground, that's all.
Sure.
So, I guess, how are they allowed to discharge onto Martin Road?
It's an overflow.
This, so, let me explain, if, if I could.
Oh, okay.
This is where all the water on the site currently goes, right here, in fact, it goes right out the corner at the edge of this existing driveway. What we're doing is burning this up a little bit, so we're forcing the low point here, so it's not impacting the butters driveway, so we're forcing the low point here, but what we, what we do with the drainage design is mimic what happens under existing conditions, as Bill alluded to. So, we have a certain amount of flow that leaves, we add impervious to the site, which increases the flow, but we then mitigate it with our subsurface, uh, chamber system, so that we actually have less flow leaving the site than we do under existing conditions. So, it's not as if we're sending a turn of water where it doesn't already go now, we're actually reducing that.
You're reducing it down? What, what's the percentage of reduction?
Uh, I wouldn't be able to tell you the percentages, but the numbers are so low. I can bring that to the next hearing.
There is an issue, what happens, so if we see excess water, there's a water issue discharging into Martin Road, what's the?
With, with the nearest catch basin?
There is none.
It's an open drainage system down the street, so way far away.
It's in my backyard.
Pleasant Street.
No.
But again, when.
It's right at the, right at the memorial, the common, there's, there's. Two here, but that's it, there's nothing coming down Martin Road, there's no drainage.
I'm not suggesting that it will be anytime soon that they have a problem, but.
Twenty years from now.
I did solicit feedback from John and he had that same concern, um, and the fire chief, I forwarded your comments to, so I'm waiting to hear back from him. And there was one more, oh, Bob's. Yeah, to look at the sewer, make sure that looks good to him, the sewer and water.
I've been, haven't been able to get a call back from.
I know, I've been trying to.
Tried him a bunch of times.
I've been trying to.
Is there, are you doing sewer out the back?
Yeah, but we're not touching the sewer, we're actually utilizing the existing sewer pipe that's there now, so we're not doing any work in that manhole, we're not doing any work in the street. We're utilizing the existing pipe.
The existing pipe?
Yep.
What's, what's the diameter of that?
Six inch.
Six inch, okay.
Okay, so what happens if there's, like, if it fails? What's the repercussions for the town if the street's flooding in twenty years? There's like, if everything's all sediment-filled, what's the?
If it starts to have a problem, we'll, we'll notice it and we'll, we'll contact the owner and have him.
I assume you're going to condition your approval such that maintenance is required in accordance with the O and M plan that we've submitted.
Okay.
And Bill has ensured that that's going to happen, so.
Okay, great.
Anything else? Motion to continue?
We'll move.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for J E H Real Estate Investment Company LLC to March tenth at eight P M.
Seconded by Tracy, seconded by Mike Zee, and for the discussion, all those in favor? The motion carries.
Make sure you time.
Next meeting, hopefully we can wrap it up.
That's the goal.
Bill, you want to, you want to take these and all?
Every one of them.
Yeah, he's here for one and two, yep.
Sleepy Hollow subdivision, reading progress plan, possible votes.
Andy submitted a drawing today, um, after we went back and forth a couple of times with comments, I have not had a chance to look at it, um, so I don't know if you want to just talk to the board maybe about it, you'd probably be in a better position than I.
Yeah, so, um, for Bill's request, we printed it in forty scale, um, the, uh, it was done with a drone, verified by, um, Mike Sutcliffe out there. Lance, right, Lance Anderson?
Lance does the survey.
Yeah, Lance did the survey, checked in, tied into the property line, spot checked grades, verified our grades, we brought it up and, uh, Bill, um, Bill reviewed it a couple times and commented, we handed the wet stamp plans to Bill today, around two o'clock. And it is just a progress print, um, the, uh, the intent still is to have it paved, we're shooting for mid-April, May first at the latest.
So, so what's the plan for the restoration and closeout of the earth removal?
So, I guess if I, we want to discuss that, so, because there's two things kind of going on here, there's, um, so the, the subdivision is approved, right?
Yes.
So, I'm kind of asking here, um, so, the majority of the drainage is in, the water would be going in in the next month, gravel it and pave it, so at that point, the road is paved, so, um, if Jim were to post a bond, I'm speaking for Jim now, as whatever entity, he owns Sleepy Hollow in, um, would the board require that all the lots be loamed and seeded if a builder was going to start on the lots? Is that what we're talking about, Bill?
So, you know, this becomes problematic, um, when you have a site that, so, so first of all, let's talk about schedule, but your, your current earth removal permit is what, valid till November is my reference?
It was the one year extension.
So, so, November, um, you're going to come in, you're going to pave and do various things associated with the road construction, which is a portion of the earth removal, um, that certainly would be satisfactory getting back, buying your code, code paving down. I assume loaming and seeding, you know, the stormwater management structures, perhaps the side slopes that won't be, that won't be touched, right? And that leaves these bottom areas that you're going to have to put a house in, a driveway and a septic system?
Correct.
You know, so, what, what, the problem is, you're not going to sell one hundred percent of these lots on day one, you know? And, and I would imagine twenty-two lots is going to take a little time to sell.
How long that takes?
That's an expert.
Yeah, but it still doesn't, oh, ours will just sell so much faster. I noticed it because it's on that street. Yeah, but that is a development there.
Yes, it is. It took a while.
You're dating.
Years, years. I started coming out here ten years ago and it's still not full.
Oh, that's great deal, but, so, to Bill's point, it's twenty, twenty-something lots and stuff like that, so best case, you're doing ten a year?
You know, so, so that's what you got to kind of weigh, I, I don't think there's, I think there's some value with what Andy's talking about, and of course, he probably doesn't know which ten lots might sell first.
Right, right.
You know, so.
Well, so there's two issues, so I, I guess what I'm hearing the board would be to loam and seed. Everything, um, a lot of the slopes are seeded now, uh, but loam and seed everything, and then I guess, if, if the road were in, well, it would be, I, I guess what I'm hearing is let's strip some loam and seed. So, what could happen, though, is conceivably, right, so, I'm fine with that, but I'm not Jim pine, but I'm pine sand, so we have to abide by the earth removal, but.
So, wouldn't you loom and seed, you know, your, your slopes and your entrance area, you're not going to loom and seed all these lots?
Well, that's, I think that's where we're going.
You're not going to leave twenty-two lots wide open?
Yeah, that's where, no, but.
But if you, if, if you did, if you're coming in here doing like a temporary, I mean, you're going to pave the whole road all the way through, straight through, for all twenty-two lots all at once? Or, because most subdivisions will go in and do?
We'll pave all the way to the cover. So, I guess my only question, and, so we've loamed and seeded. But we're not established because the grass is growing. Jimmy posts the bond and sells two or three lots, I think it probably ended up one builder. Does he have to come in, probably have to come in, or do we have to wait for the grass to grow to strip it off if he's starting out? That's really the issue.
My concern is, you still have an open gravel.
It becomes problematic, too, though, if they sell a house or a lot in the subdivision. Now, we've got surety for a third-party lot, which is problematic, okay? You know, so, so, it's not clean.
Just do it all at once and then.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm open to suggest, but that's the situation that's kind of created by a subdivision and an earthquake. So, all we could do as the earth removal company is to loam and seed, and, but it's conceivable that the grass hasn't grown, and as the road's in and the bond's posted, can they do a lot?
At least you've done it.
Yeah, conscious efforts and.
So, maybe we approach that individually?
I mean, I, I think the gravel pit concern should be addressed before the, the sub-development.
Yeah.
It's still an open permit, I can't see building residential homes when you got a gravel operation coming out of the same area. But I, but I would want it as stable as it could possibly be if that is going to happen. And the water line still has to be running, I know you've tapped and you're onto the property.
So, I think, I think what we have to do, we are talking about the connection.
Yeah, the, the loop.
So, that's a conservation issue where the pond, where the, the condition was that the stream had to be perfectly dry. That hasn't happened in the last two years, so what Jim, myself, uh, would come to the conservation, propose another way, because.
I can't remember what the wording was on the.
Pretty sure it was.
Or temporary pipe?
Dry.
I thought there was some.
No flow, yeah.
I don't think that, I don't think it reaches that.
It hasn't in the last couple of years.
It's a cold, it's a cold water fishery, and it has native trout in it, I don't think it ever dries up to the point where it's dry.
Well, but that's, it's no flow, so the past two falls have not even approached low flow.
I thought we had a diverter in there, too, a system with bags and a.
No, I think that was, I'd have to revisit, I think it was something that was contemplated, but we'd like to address that and do that this fall. You know, September or October.
I think those are some issues that have to be pretty much addressed before you start building and selling houses.
Yeah, because you got to get the line in, you mean, the, the water line in to do the loop before you pave the road.
Well, no, we'll scrub it off. It, it's into the stream on one side.
Yeah, it's in, it's into the development already, they tapped off the northeast main and it's across the street.
Yeah, but it's also in, um, into the stream, you know, a hundred feet from the stream.
Yeah, right, yeah, yes, it's in that way, too, yeah, it's, it's in from both ends, but it just hasn't been joined in the middle yet.
I thought they did.
No, you should, you should do a temporary.
Well, we talked, that was talked about.
What, the directional drilling?
Yeah, there was a lot of talk about that.
Was that a talk?
Not prof, I mean, it should be, quite frankly, from an installer's standpoint, there's not a lot of flow there, you throw up some sandbags, you pump it around, you put the pipe in, restore it, shut the pump off and sheet it, it's relatively simple. If it wasn't nine o'clock, I'd go do it now.
Yeah, yeah, it might be the best time to do it right now.
Loam and seed the whole thing.
Yeah, I, yeah, and then, then Jimmy, if we, we'll talk.
Wrap up the pits out of it.
It'll take care of the dust.
Go control the dust now.
So, you have to, you just got these, you have to lick them over anyway, so.
Yeah, I'm sure they're going to be fine. I know I had some questions on cuts and fills, I just wanted to be comfortable with that.
And then they'll be a final, I'll go...
Yeah.
Good, good, thank you.
Can you anything else to add?
No, I just want to make sure we, we're on the same page with the outcome on the schedule, so...
How the next one, GBI?
Which this part?
Send me an email.
I'll get one more.
Oh, I have one, am I here for one more?
Yeah, I'm here for one more.
One more time, Glen Street.
Your next one, guaranteed building development, 37 Glen Street.
Ernie, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, let the record show that Tracy is accusing herself.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Nice try, Andy.
What's going on here?
Hello?
All right, so what's the progress on this one?
Email.
I know, but like...
Want me to go, Bill?
Yeah, go.
So the, as built, work has been done, not, it's being compiled. I pulled Bill, Bill had sent me an email today about the bond. So the issue, I think, is that it's got seeded late.
The permit timeline's coming to a close. That's why I wanted to start bringing this up.
Okay.
May...
Eight, but the, the bond ends 3/25.
Oh, the bond's, the bond's going to expire before...
Yeah, so we pulled it, this, we've renewed it.
This is not what I have. The bond we have in the file involves May 20th, I want to say.
So...
Okay, I sent you a copy of it today. And so, so from my perspective, we have a limited time to react if things are not at the proper grades. Okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm pushing to get an ASBIL plan so I can confirm that, you know, things are as they said they were going to be.
Okay.
And then, and then I'm waiting for an inspection request so I can go out and do an inspection of the grades to make sure everything's, you know, loamed and seeded properly.
Okay.
And, and once that's done, we can start working towards releasing for surety. Now, I don't know what stage it's at, and that's why I think...
Yeah, so everything's seeded, it got seeded late. So it's probably a loaf of, in the back. And then, so knowing that the growth may be established to Bill's satisfaction by that time, we have, I did verify, we have renewed the bond, so...
So we need the paperwork on that, yeah.
Yeah, so Tammy's chasing that down tomorrow, because we just have to let the grass grow. And at the same time, we should have an ASBIL to Bill for review end of next week.
All right, okay.
That sounds good.
So that's, we're just waiting for grass to grow.
Cool.
That's good, Bill.
So while I have the board's attention, we're restoring, but we have to, we were going to want to renew the De Vries Area E. Put it on the agenda next meeting.
You got to submit something.
Yeah.
Submit a letter or something.
What are we doing?
That's that De Vries Area E.
That's all the way in the back.
And you all...
Oh, Donna made it. Okay, oh, Donna, okay, okay, yeah.
Next meeting.
Yeah, all right. Can I go home now?
You can go home, yep. Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Andy, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah, but he was... My project.
All right.
Welcome back.
Oh, thank you very much.
All right, Lakeside Residential, have you got anything on that, Tony?
Um, I don't think we got specific direction at the last meeting. I did, out of courtesy, forward the draft that we had to CMRBC, because Ron Baron, you know, helped us to some extent. And I put a copy of his comments in your packet, so you have that. If you need any direction, let me know, or...
Okay. Got homework again. Okay. Solar regulations.
In your packet, I put the three copies of the moratoriums that were referenced at the last meeting for your review. If you want to do something with that, let me know and we can carry it forward. I do want you to consider, you know, the administrator pointed out that the town may have a few solar projects they're looking at, and just be mindful of that.
Yep.
And I like the tip from where a moratorium needs a clear timeframe and a good reason to conduct a comprehensive planning during said moratorium. So we can't just do it...
No.
To delay or to prevent someone.
Right.
Yes.
So that's a nice tip. No, it's from the town aware.
Yeah, but we were supposed to get some comment from legal, from the town legal.
Yeah, Jay, I did, I did speak to Jay. I don't know if I have something in email, I don't know.
I got two of the same.
So I forwarded some newspaper articles, let's see. So he says, "It appears that Charlton may have had a municipal exemption, but I'm unable to locate their prior version, the moratorium expired. I'm curious whether such a moratorium would be enforceable in light of the Dover Amendment."
There was three towns that basically said, hey, we need 12 months to put some regulations in.
Yeah, Ware got approved by the county.
Quite a few got approved.
Yeah.
But the goal was...
And they can be appealed, they can be challenged, even though the HGE...
They're going to be.
Well, I'm just, you know, I don't want people thinking that.
No, no.
Okay, you got homework to do on that, Bill.
Yep.
Nothing about whether that's a good idea or a bad idea. To have a...
He didn't, he didn't define about that, and you know...
This one's Charlton.
Lawyers.
So I guess we, the board needs to decide, do we want to entertain a moratorium? Do we want to take it forth for the people, or do we not want to do it?
I think what we need to do is, instead of worrying about a moratorium, start working on some kind of...
The guidelines?
Guideline.
My gilly...
Let's get going on the guideline.
Regulating for removals.
I don't know, I'm speaking for myself here. I mean, like, I would say, as you know, I have one going across the street, Susie's land, it's her deal. I'd rather have that than a housing development, personally. So I think everybody's going and preaching about, you know, clean energy, clean energy, clean energy. Then you go put a moratorium on it, so you already put in these strict guidelines to build a house, but yet you're going to stop solar from coming in. So it's kind of one of those deals, I think leave it, but yet start working on some kind of general guideline.
We're going to stay open.
You got to leave it open.
Just a crack is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just start working on some general guidelines. I think what we've been doing so far has been awesome.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it has.
It's pretty clean.
I mean, and everybody so far, not from the board, has been forthcoming on listening to the board and to the abuddies, so...
So just had those automatically as the guidelines for a new...
I think it's a start, look, Bill has a good punch list going, I think, on things that we're looking at. Well, it's been consistent for all of them so far. And then maybe look at that and maybe tweak it or add it.
Comments between all of these that we've seen that have become a standard for it?
Yeah. Right, right.
Paved aprons to a certain degree, 20 to 20...
Yes, the road going all the way around now, that's been kind of standard lately.
Right.
The fencing height, you know, there's certain things that we've been looking at.
Stormwater management.
So we have this, we have this in our, from Charlton, large solar energy system. So they have each thing with fences and this and this and this and this. So that's something we need to revise our existing.
And look at...
I agree, Mike, I'd rather spend the time doing that than working on a moratorium which...
Well, a moratorium basically...
I mean, they're even doing...
Puts the brakes on it, so you can put something in place. I'm not, okay, just speaking on my preference. I'm not in favor of putting the brakes on it. I think if we adopt something, and then from there forward.
And that's just even showing land clearing.
Yeah.
Land clearing shall be limited to 30%. So they are calling out in their bylaw what you can do.
But the problem I have, like with some of that, is you're going with the development or whatever, ding, wang, and just cut it all down. So, and that puts a burden on the town then, for all the extra houses, all the extra vehicles, all the extra kids. And just everything is added to the town. Whereas this here, yes, it's going to be there, but it's like everything, it's what's going on.
I'm just trying to say that they are implementing regulations.
Different things, yes.
Yeah, the purpose of the...
With the bylaw, not just have a Dover amendment to have everything.
Purpose of the moratorium was to give time to make some of these decisions and study some of these issues.
We can make, I think we can make those decisions rather than wasting time trying to push a moratorium to which...
And I know that you've been...
Every time it comes up, also we see as values.
There's a generalized list that you've been going by.
Or here's an example.
For questions on, or what you've been seeing lately and things that continually come up. You know, maybe somewhere on, I want to just say, say the pesticides and herbicides. I know we've banned that on everyone we've done so far.
Right.
So do we make that maybe as part of something in the guideline, or not?
There's a bylaw, there's only bylaw.
Things of that nature can maybe be worked into something.
My concern about that is...
We don't want to limit too much.
Like, they're, they're putting in a solar farm. It's still Susie's land and she's the agricultural overseer of it.
Correct.
I don't know if we, I mean, she falls, if she falls under a farm, we can't ban her from doing her farming.
Correct, or impacting her farming.
But she already spoke too, that she does not want any use of, in that case.
Yes, I'm fine with that, I'm happy with that, that's great. But I'm just saying, I don't think we have the authority to overrule Massachusetts farming laws to say you can't.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. But as long as no herbicides.
Yes.
You know, it's one of those deals, I'm just saying on the chemical aspect of it.
Yeah, I agree, no chemicals, I agree.
I'm just, you know, those are little things that we worked on.
So the direction of the board is going to be to revise our existing bylaw. Is that the, is that what we're talking about?
We don't have a bylaw.
Well, we have a...
To create some kind of regulation.
Yes. You have to create it.
To add, yeah. So we kind of need to like do that.
Yeah, well, we've been working, we've been bringing up stuff, we're getting this stuff now.
Then let's send them more.
We're almost going to go with Webster's, but then Webster said this doesn't go on.
Maybe, maybe we can do it this way, and I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, throwing it out there.
Keep site plan review the way it is, add a threshold condition for a solar array over a certain size, and maybe only one sentence that says, you know, in a different section that says, "Solar arrays require a special permit over a certain size." And then allow, allow, enable the planning board to adopt some regulations as opposed to bylaws that would regulate.
So I would...
So we don't get into all the minutia with the zoning bylaw, we have our regulations.
Regulations is the way to do it, yeah.
It would be under like our rules and regulations for the board?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that could.
Yeah.
That's better than a bylaw, I think.
Do we, do we think we can draft something up?
Well, and it's going to be accurate.
In that way, we don't have to wait for town meeting to come up with something.
Yeah, no, we're going to do it.
And they can do everything right away.
Yeah, while we're on solar...
One question.
Huh?
You have a question.
Oh, I didn't see you.
I know, a lot of my annual spot, right? Question in regards to that, so obviously if there was a bylaw or something, that would take time, it would probably have to go to town meeting, and any other thing, right? Now, if you put in regulation, what is the timeframe on that?
As soon as we get them, one meeting.
And then...
We would have to first go to town meeting to get, get the bylaw revisions which enable us to adopt regulations. Then the regulations are a simple public hearing that we would have, and then the next day they'd be effective.
Same, same.
Too late to get on, town meeting coming, what is it, Nick?
No, it's not.
Oh.
The warrant's not closed.
Warrant's not closed.
So when does that close? I'm just trying to get the timeframe.
We can try to get it on, but that meeting probably, you know, not.
It's a significant impact, and you guys all know it because you've been here on the abuddies, and I know, I agree with you, Mike. It's your property, you should be able to do, but when I have to go to the ZBA and certified mailings and this and that, notify abuddies for a shed, but these guys can come in and clear 40 acres and put up a solar farm?
Right.
And not go in front of anything? That's not right.
That's right.
The verbiage in the zoning board of appeals is it cannot be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Right.
This, to many people, is significantly more detrimental. That's why I asked for you guys to look into the moratorium. I don't know the process, I don't know any of it, okay? But whatever the quickest way is, I'm all about. But something needs to be done, it's already been done, it's too late for my neighborhood. It's happening now with these guys. Maybe they get it in, maybe they don't, and I don't have anything bad to say about them, they're doing their job, but it's just unfortunate.
I want to say one thing, if I can.
Can I finish?
On some of it is...
Mike, can I finish?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
There's plenty of, there's plenty of, I mean, I know we don't have a lot of industrial in, in the town, or industry, commercial businesses, but there's plenty of other places, I don't have a problem with solar, but when you're putting an industrial array in somebody's backyard, there's no way anybody could have planned for that when they bought their house. And I know you say all the time, Ernie, you bought what you bought, you should have known what you bought, this and that, but...
Not about this, I don't, no.
It can't be significantly more detrimental. And I know that's Dover, and, you know, a shed is ZBA and not protected by Dover, but your job as the board is to look out for the residents of the town. So whatever you guys can do to make it as quick as possible, to just pump the brakes and say, "Let's take a hard look at this and do what's best for the residents." That's all I'm asking you to do.
Yep.
Because every single one of these that has gone through, you've been challenged on, or people have come and said, "We don't want this, we don't want this, we don't want this." And we don't know the long-term effects, let's be honest. We don't know, is there going to be leakage, is there going to... They could say everything they want, not just you guys, anybody before you. "Oh, we're not going to use herbicides, we're not going to do that." Once they're out the door, nobody knows what's going up on that 40 acres. Nobody knows. No left turn. Who's going to be standing out there making sure nobody takes a left turn? Nobody. You know, so you could put all the regulation in you want, but...
All the neighbors.
I'm just saying, please do what's best for the residents.
So we can, we can get on just for the sentence of revising our rules and regulations.
It'd be a very minor edit to the zoning bylaw.
So we can do that.
And what, so what I was going to suggest is, you, you authorized me to work with town council on developing something that reflects what we spoke of in terms of the thresholds.
Yes.
For what's a small array, what's a large array, so on and so forth. Requiring a special permit, you know, we've talked about that in the past.
Yep.
We'll take that, I'll talk to town council, see what minor edits can be made to the zoning book for this May. Because I do agree, I think warrant articles are due early March to the selectmen. I'm not sure if we're...
Coming up very soon.
Well, we'll probably, we'll probably meet before, but I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't think, coming up close.
And so, so the plan would be to move forward with that if we don't have another meeting.
Okay.
If we have another meeting, I'll present it first here and then we'll...
I just don't want to go a whole nother year or whatever, six months, waiting for another, you know what I mean?
Yes.
And then how many more projects are going to come down the pipeline and affect more residents? Like I said, it's too late for me, it's already done. But you're just going to look out for everybody. Not just what the board thinks or what I think, or...
What's considered. Might not be.
Might not be, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are you folks here for anything?
Those aren't solar people. Those are the solar people.
I think they were curious.
I noticed a change, but I can't.
The claudins for punishment.
Are you just.
You're here? No, just observing.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
What a fun night, eh?
Okay, next slide, I'll run you again. Minutes. They got a way, Mike.
Ernie, sorry, hold on, Mike. So, so. So, um, there was, there was.
Is this?
Yeah, we talked about, instead of doing, we talked about the Lakeside Residential overlay.
How I was supposed to revise the zoning bylaw.
Instead of doing the Lakeside Residential overlay.
Yeah.
And in doing that, we talked about maybe improving our bylaws where it says the non-conforming.
The existing.
The existing bylaws.
Lost creating.
So.
Any new zone or overlay.
We talked about this. So.
Yeah.
So, section one, dot three, adding in the scope. This was actually in our bylaws back in the day and was, for some reason, I don't know what, someone might have removed it for the wrong, for some purpose. But basically adding in, yeah, that's it, that's the first one.
Doc, I'm gonna be waving around here.
It's this one right here.
Just one second, it's at the end.
At the end.
But this doesn't speak to any particular zone.
No, no, this, yeah, so, so it's adding in the light, I did it in red, so sorry.
Lakeside residential?
Yeah, if you start, if you start where it says a lot or parcel of land having an area of frontage less than the amount is required, then the table dimensions. So that's the start of it, and then the end, the end is the end where it ends at general bylaws.
That's just adding?
Adding. Adding that in. Okay?
To which, to which section?
You have the wrong paper. It's this paper.
Wow, no wonder.
It's okay.
This is associated with Lakeside Residential? Yes. Instead of doing Lakeside Residential, it's adding in that language where you do have a smaller lot or less frontage or less area.
The last two pages.
Yep.
Right there.
Sorry, Ernie.
Yep, go ahead.
So we, we talked about, we were at the point of, do we do overlaying a Lakeside Residential, or do we just update our bylaws? We were kinda wavering which way to go. So it was requested, say, okay, let's look at both options. I think we weighed down the Lakeside Residential and all that would take. The other, the other change that would be needed would be in three dot five. I'm sorry, three dot one dot five here, follow me? There's a strikeout section, Ernie.
Yep.
Strikeout section, and then there's a start of it where it says or.
Yep.
And it goes restore limitations.
Where are you with that?
That's, that's removed.
So you're proposing to remove this?
Remove the strike area?
Yeah.
And then add in where it stops at, uh, provided, yeah, then you add that.
Add after provided?
Yep, yeah, behind it, yep.
So this.
That gets added.
This is all new to the end?
This here, so this.
Is new.
Is new, so this is add, sorry, yeah, it's add, strikeout is removed. This way here, we're, we're now, one of the discussion points we've had over these last six months is allowing the special permit to go, go forward when someone applies for a special permit versus putting in the building inspector's decision to make and stuff like that. I think Aaron referenced Natick and stuff like that, and other towns that will be more evitation to the owner. And then the other lineup, the other two line items being striked out is down at the bottom where it says, in the event that the building inspector determines that gets striked out, instead it says, and then that, the non-conforming nature of a lot structures increased, and it goes forward from there.
So, so what, is there any additions?
No, just a removal.
Just a removal.
Yep, and then the bottom on six dot one, sorry, three dot one six. Is removing, because thi- this line here, I've read this thing three times, and I'm like, if you don't meet the setbacks in the requirements, you, you're already in a non-conforming section, so you'll never meet.
Yeah, this is non-conforming uses in structures.
That's just a removal.
So this is just removal.
Yeah. So when it says, you shall meet all applicable requirements for yard setbacks in height, right? It, it's very unclear about that, so you're not gonna meet the setbacks.
If you're in the non-conforming section.
You're in the non-conforming section of the bylaws.
That's why you, that's why it's written there, that because you're non-conforming.
They're allowed to build back, and it's number three, right, and they've got to.
Correct. You're building back on the existing footprint that you're allowed, Ernie, but you'll never meet the setbacks because.
You're already non-conforming.
But you can't extend the non-conform. But again, this would be in section three dot one.
Right, 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 that's what this is saying.
Three one is our non-conforming section of our bylaws.
Right, okay.
So this is where everything comes into play.
So, Ernie, remember the last meeting, and I was not in favor of the particular ten foot, twelve foot thing. This is, this is leaving the underlying zoning in place and allowing someone to either A, build up to the existing underlying zoning, twenty-five, fifty, whatever.
Yeah.
Or exten- continue the non-conformity on a particular line without going to zoning, as long as that's not extended. So if you're at eight point five feet, you can continue eight point five feet until you hit a fifty-foot mark or something. And that's it. That's it, that's the extent of this, is that we're giving some latitude, but not all of it like before, at all.
Anything new would have to meet the requirements.
Yeah.
So, I, I would suggest we still run this by town council, get feedback on it.
But I think we're in a direction.
So, I wanna, I wanna be clear how this, how this came in, into the packets.
Yep, I emailed you, Bill, and Maria.
You did?
Yes, I got the email.
What?
Today.
Oh, when?
Four fifty-nine. No, no.
You were out to supper.
Probably out to supper.
That's why you're releasing the new draft. I emailed you and Maria.
What?
I'm surprised, it's in the package.
I am too, I'm shocked, actually.
Five oh eight.
Five oh eight.
Oh.
No wonder.
And I was saying four fifty-nine, what was I?
So, remember how everybody was looking for my revisions?
Yes, as you offered.
Which I don't see, that's bad. So Les took it upon himself to make the revisions, and I think this cuts probably ZBA applications in half.
Yeah.
So if you propose a garage, your house is outside of the setbacks, or you have a small lot with less than the required frontage for the zone, and you have a proposal for a garage that is within all the current setbacks, you can attach it to that house, and you do not need to go to ZBA.
As long as you don't take a house and put it non-conforming that is conforming.
Correct.
You can't make, you can't attach it.
We're talking about this, this, all these areas that, so.
So it's a good marriage, Ernie, I think this is saying.
I'm, I'm impressed. And, and, and three, and three one, three one, there was, there's a couple of different case laws that this triggered. When, so this basically says, you know, brand file of lots before zoning and stuff like that.
Yep.
Before nineteen seventy, this was taken out for some reason, and when I was going through it, I was like, it should always been there. So basically, if a lot was established in nineteen, before nineteen seventy, it, it was a lot.
It's like a furcal.
Correct, you mean, it's, it's a lot.
And we don't have non-conforming lots under non-conforming uses and structures section.
Right.
So usually towns will have the undersized lot bylaw. They usually have a section relating to that.
So we're just doing it by date and, you know.
Right, so we have the uses, we have the structures, and we have the lots.
You, and you're not re-snapping the line, it's, it was when it was established in nineteen seventy.
It is what it is, what it is.
Well, I thought, I, that's, that's the bit that.
Yeah, and there was, um, what is it? Section forty-six, um, Mass General Law covers a bunch of stuff related to when lots were established and zoning and stuff like that. Lots were established. Yeah.
It's the lots that were established for a certain date, whether they're, meet the criteria or not, and people can take an existing lot that they pay taxes on, that was established before a certain date, and the, and the town cannot deny them building on that lot as long as they meet the currency.
Okay, yeah.
Just a, just a term I knew from you.
And then this tiny home, I think that the state adopted a code for tiny homes, and we need to address that immediately.
I haven't read it yet.
So they, um, I believe they are allowed in Massachusetts.
Do you want to write an email?
Don't write that down, but I'm pretty sure. Um, that they've been approved, that's why they have a tiny home should require a special permit from ZBA. So that's like a whole separate unit. We do have, so I would say the, the detached accessory structures should be under this provision.
The tiny homes, it doesn't, it doesn't, you still have to.
And it's saying it's not an accessory structure.
A Realtor contacted me, asked me for the board to take a look at this, if it's something you wanna do. That's the only reason it's in there.
Tiny homes.
It's not that anybody's proposing anything.
But it does define.
If you wanna put one on a lot, it still has, if you're an RA, you still need two hundred, because it's two hundred feet in front of you.
No.
No. No.
No.
Then I'm not in favor of that at all.
Ernie, so you know, if you do research on forty Bs, they did a whole little community with.
Yeah, that's because, that's, and that's how they're doing it, because they're saying, oh, you can put a little tiny house for your re-los.
This is, so allowing you some tiny home on parcels that already contain a single-family house. So we're at two principal structures on a single lot.
On the same lot, which is not allowed.
But, Ernie.
It is allowed.
The difference is here, it's not grounded, there's no foundation, it's on a trailer. It's potentially temporary, it has to be renewed every year, it's for a relative, and it says it has to have a bathroom that's seventy square feet. Is the current building code requirement ten by seven?
But now, but now you're allowing.
And it says, a tiny home, it says a tiny home is not an accessory structure.
It is an accessory.
No, it's not.
No, yeah, okay.
I think we're gonna read through it.
As defined in Massachusetts building code.
They already read it over, we'll discuss it, but that's what we're researching.
Alright, meeting minutes, let's go.
Go ahead, man, you're up, Mike, you've been quiet, let's go.
Let's do your meeting minutes, Dan, Mike.
Uh, I didn't see anything.
Oh, yeah.
You didn't see anything, huh?
Make a motion, make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written for February eleventh.
Second.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by Tracy. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Yeah.
All abstained, motion carries.
So I propose to.
Make another motion.
I propose between, at that, should we have legal counsel look at this tiny house by law?
I believe it's already passed by the building code, Massachusetts building code.
Building code, but that's a use thing.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be in the building code.
Yeah, it's.
It's not in the one to, one to family dwelling.
I, I think, I think that thing.